Hey, good evening, Milpitas. Welcome to tonight's Milpita City Council meeting on this Tuesday evening, February the 4th, 2020. Your City Council just came out of closed session. We thank you for your patience and understanding as we had to conclude some closed session items that are on the agenda. So I'll look over to our city attorney, Chris Diaz, for any announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to legally report out of closed session this evening, but I did want to note for the public that I know there's been various agendas floating out there. We do have four closed sessions that the council did consider this evening, and the final agenda is at the back of the room if you want to take a look, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Next up on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guards, prepare to post the colors. Color guard, post the colors. Color guard, honor the colors. Two. Color guard dismissed. The audience may be seated.
Hey, great job watching. Introduce yourselves, one by one. Welcome to City Hall this evening, and don't forget to give a shout out to your scoutmaster.
Hello, my name is Amog Konkara, and my scoutmaster is Mr. Hans.
My name is Tru Nyer.
My name is Arjun Marguppin.
My name is William.
My name is Isaac.
Great job giving a round of applause. Great job, great job. And next, we will go to the invocation this evening. And the invocation this evening will be presented by Sunny Hills' very own council member, Carmen Montano.
So the invocation today is to allow everyone to have an open mind and to bring peace in the city of Milpitas and to have all the citizens and residents partake in the government process to come before and to speak on items. And we, as the council, be here with you and listen to you as your constituents. You are constituents, and we listen to you. So with that, I ask God to bless this community, the city of Milpitas, and the council to give us, and God to give us the wisdom to make the right decisions for the community. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Councilmember Montana. Next up on our agenda, I just want to take a moment here. If it's your first time at the City Council meeting, welcome to the chamber. We have an agenda that we go by, and if you need an agenda, it should be here on the table or through those doors on the wall. And so for those that are here for the first time, a City Council meeting for the very first time, I do want to welcome you once again. And next up on our agenda is presentations. I want to ask the Vice Mayor and the City Council to join me here at this podium. We have a lot to celebrate with these presentations, and I'm really looking forward to recognizing a legend, a legend this evening here in our region, and also our business partners here in town. So the first presentation that I have... The first presentation that I have is a commendation from the city of Milpitas, and I've given out a countless number of commendations during my short time in office. I've had various legends throughout the whole valley come to these chambers here that you sit in to receive these commendations. But tonight, we're gonna do something that I have not done, and tonight, I want to really recognize Carl Gardino with not just a commendation, but a key to the city. The Milpita City Council recognizes and congratulates you on your retirement after 23 years of exemplary service as CEO of the Silicon Valley Group. Under your leadership, you have driven regional public policy on transportation, housing, and other key issues, both here at home and on the East Coast in Washington, DC. I'll tell you what, I'd rather be here tonight with you than in Washington, DC. During your tenure, you have successfully shepherded several major regional initiatives in both housing and transportation, including bringing the Bay Area Rapid Transit to Milpitas and San Jose. You have spearheaded the creation of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group Foundation, which hosts various events benefiting local nonprofit community organizations. In 2005, you and your wife, Leslie, founded the Silicon Valley Turkey Trot. Yes. And have grown it into a beloved annual tradition for many Bay Area families, which I see all over my Facebook feed on Thanksgiving, as well as a powerful multimillion-dollar fundraising tool for local housing, health, and food nonprofit organizations. We commend your continued service representing our community on the California Transportation Commission and wish you continued success in all of your future plans. I want to share a personal story. I was living in New York City prior to moving back home and running for office here in Milpitas, and I was in school at NYU studying public management and policy. And the main policy I focused on was public policy for metropolitan regions. And I used to take a look at New York City and do a lot of case studies and really study all the areas of housing, transportation, that are so correlated for a good society. And when I moved back home and had the opportunity to work for the city of Milpitas, I got a phone call from Carl Gardino, and he invited me to the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. I said, "What's that? Who's Carl Gardino?" And when I went over there, I felt like I truly was fortunate to just be in his presence and to understand him as a person, very importantly, all the things that he's done over the past two decades to contribute to our lives in Milpitas, whether it's pushing for, I believe, some tax measures to help our transportation systems many years ago, to really being a leader and a great father to his children. And I know that with the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, under his guidance and the foundation of the service that it provides to our region, that New York City doesn't compare even half of what the Silicon Valley Leadership Group is to our region, and we're going to be the best region because of leadership folks like Carl. So Carl, please come on down. So I want to have you stand here with me for a moment. I want to invite Councilmember Anthony Fan up here. You have a lot of folks who have some very important things to say to you, so please stand with me. Go ahead and get Anthony over here.
Wow. I can't believe that you're going to be moving on, and you're going to be sorely missed, and the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, I think, will have very big shoes to fill. I think it's probably been a very long time since you've served in elected office, but you embody the kind of leadership that all of us serving on the days here really aspire to have. And, you know, there's a lot to be proud of in Milpitas. We have some really great companies investing in Milpitas, Apple and Amazon, and I think it's because that we've set the infrastructure with housing and transportation. And the work on these issues that you have committed to, not only in Milpitas, but in this region as a whole, is unparalleled. And you are really the mayor of Silicon Valley. So we owe it to you for the work that you've done, bringing BART to Milpitas, all of the funds that you've helped generate for transportation, for affordable housing, for affordable housing. It's your tireless commitment towards serving the community, the amount of sweat and tears that you've put in. And if you're wondering how much sweat, I want to show everybody just a clip about that really highlights the dedication that this man has put into Milpitas specifically. So I might thank you.
Anthony kindly reached out and asked me to come by. If you think you came aways, I had car trouble, so I rode my bike 17 miles to get here. So here's what I recommend. It was a long ride. It's kind of warm out, so you don't want to stand too close to me right now, because I probably should be standing here and not smelling so bad. Anthony asked me to share a moment why he has been supporting Measure B. Think B for better commutes and better roads. Think B for BART and bikes, and lifeline service for buses for seniors and the disabled, as well right here in Milpitas, $40 million for street maintenance and pothole repair, improvements on Calaveras, on Highway 237, on Montague, bike-ped improvements, bus improvements for lifeline service and core transit service, and then the valley-wide improvements as well. You probably know that we have so much congestion now, coupled with our bad roads, that the average motorist in Santa Clara County pays $2,500 a year more in time lost in traffic away from our families and our jobs, and that's a waste of money as well as a waste of time.
That's just Measure B, guys. He's been doing this for so many different initiatives, and we really owe it to him. So this is the very least that we can do to say thank you, Carl, for everything you've done, and really, we wish you well in wherever your journey takes you.
Not that I don't want him at my back. I just like to keep an eye on him, always, always. So many of you know I'm from Orange County first. So when I'd hear Carl's name down there, I was supportive of about 1% of everything he said. Then I moved up here, and I don't think I've had coffee with anybody as much as I had with him. And then he took me one time, or excuse me, I went with him one time to Washington, DC, and he said, "Bob, let's go and talk about transportation in DC." So we did. Flew in, changed, went to a meeting, got up, went to meetings all day, got on a plane, and came back. I was in bed the whole next day. All I got, though, when I woke up were all these texts from Carl says, "Where are you after this? What do you want to do with this? What do you want to do with this?" And I thought, "Why didn't he sleep?" But by the end of two years after that, it moved me over to 70% of his ideas I agreed with. One of the things that's difficult to remember is that in Los Angeles and Orange County, Southern California, there is all this sprawl, and so you never really get to talk to anybody. You can complain about traffic all you want, but you never get an opportunity to talk to people one-on-one. And what you saw in that video, what I really noticed, is Carl makes a real effort to make sure he gets to see you, talk to you, and explain why it's needed. It's not just about the city of Milpitas, so that's important. It's all about regional things, because what happens here impacts all the cities around us, the counties around us, and that's what I learned by going to Washington, DC. And it didn't hit me until I was sitting next to persons that would tell me the exact same stories from their cities and their counties, big companies, large companies, large corporations, small little mom-and-pop places, that we all had the same problems, and unless we had a common voice, nothing would get done. And so I want to thank you, because you took somebody that just knew he was right and convinced them to do it differently and to do it righter. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for the opportunity. Carl, I just want to say thank you for everything that you have demonstrated, not only to elected officials, but also staff members. The first time that we met, it was on the 18th floor. I had gotten my first job with council member. I had no clue what I was doing, and I remember talking about just campaigns and why are they so important? Then we started talking about measures. And then I remember seeing you on the floor a couple of times, and I was like, "Who is that?" But everyone knew it was Carl that was going to make it happen. He didn't, I don't know if he recognized that. We didn't know how or when, but he already knew that. And he doesn't sleep, like Vice Mayor said, he really doesn't, because he's always thinking, "What's the next big thing?" But I think one of the most important things is that he has really demonstrated what leadership is in this region and what we could do when we do it together. But most importantly, I think you've been able to grow, and I know everybody that has worked with you and along with you have grown in measures that they've never thought, including myself. Thank you so much for your leadership, for your mentorship. Please know you have changed this region and this valley, and that I hope that I'm able to one day reach the level of greatness that you have.
So when I first met Carl, this was when you first started the Santa Clara Valley Leadership Group, and there was a gentleman, and I can't remember his name, but he went to Washington. He was, I forget his name, but that was when you first started that. And I was with Economic Social Opportunities, so Tommy Foulcher, that was long, back in the late 80s. So I want to thank you for doing all that you do in this valley. You really care about this valley. It's heartfelt, and that you include everybody, all the leaders. You always say hello to everybody. You're really, this guy's a really, he's not arrogant, he's really friendly. He shakes your hand, says hello. He's such a wonderful person, and it shows. You have an aura about you that is beautiful. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Who would like to give the rebuttal? Well, my... This is such a humbling experience, when we have a chance to serve our communities and wonderful leaders like these five go out of their way to recognize the small things that we try to do to make our communities, our region, our state, and our nation a better It's funny, if you take the word "me" and you flip that "m," it's "we," and we're so much more effective when we do that. The organization that I have been so honored to represent as CEO for these past 23 years, the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, was created by one of those folks who wasn't a "me" person, he was a "we" person, and that was David Packard, the co-founder of Hewlett-Packard, who lived a life of servant leadership, guiding his company and his communities to be better places for everyone. And hopefully, in some small way, I've lived up to Mr. Packard's expectations in this role. I do have to clarify one misnomer, as my wife smiles and reminds me, "With three young children and a mortgage, I am not retiring." I am stepping aside in this role after our Board of Directors conducts a thorough and thoughtful search over the next four to eight months. But I ran track in school and the relay, and in a relay, you never drop the baton, because the rest of your team is depending on you. And I will stay in my role until that baton is successfully handed off. I'm honored that my colleague, Megan White, who is a Milpitas resident, and her fiance, Joe, are here tonight. They would be happy to lead the rebuttal if you do have time for that. But it's people like that who are passionate professionals, like each person in this room, who just want to make our community a better place, that have launched me out of bed every morning for 23-plus years in this role. Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, it's been an honor to serve with you. Bob, the Washington, DC trip is March 30th and 31st, and we hope you and others may join us, because we need a voice in Washington, DC for our region, just as we need voices for the voiceless here before the council and with the council, so that we lift everyone up in our region. We're firm believers that you can lift yourself up without ever tearing others down, that we can lift up all of us as a region when we care enough to do so. That's what I've tried to do, failed many times, but that's what we try to do at the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. So thank you again. This is the first time I've ever spoken here where that three-minute time remaining never moved. Thank you again.
And the second presentation we have is for Manufacturing Day here in Milpitas, really an annual tradition now. And I want to bring up... You want to, there's a video? Should we play it now? Okay. Manufacturing Day, here's the video.
Manufacturing Day 2019 for us from the Office of Economic Development means we're connecting young students with the possibility of careers in advanced manufacturing and technology.
Economic development starts with manufacturing.
This is the third annual Manufacturing Day in Milpitas. This year, we had three employers participate, on and on, Headway Technologies and Flex.
It's an opportunity for us to explore further different partnerships that can exist here in Milpitas.
It's an opportunity for our students to see what the future of manufacturing holds for them.
Manufacturers across the United States are facing a workforce nearing retirement, but lack the younger workers to fill those roles.
Advanced manufacturing is core to our business environment. About 29% of our overall business and workforce is in technology and advanced manufacturing.
It means an opportunity for our students and for our staff members to see in action what is happening in the world and to see in action what they can do... what is happening in the world and to see in action what they can do with learning so that it's meaningful.
We want to start preparing students today for the jobs that are going to be happening in four to eight years.
It's an opportunity for us to celebrate manufacturing, getting to design, be creative, to build, to explore other opportunities, especially since we're living in the heart of the Silicon Valley.
I just want to inspire some of the kids that might not have ever considered manufacturing to be something they wanted to get involved in.
We chose to participate in Manufacturing Day as a way to promote careers in manufacturing.
What they learned here today, they can take back to their high school and share with their high school friends and their peers.
By bringing these kids in, they have an idea of what the future is going to be for them. So they actually see what they can do when they graduate.
Students, they loved it. They went crazy about everything.
I like wearing those eyeglasses with the speakers inside of it.
It opened my eyes to like a whole new field of ideas.
A new chance for new opportunities.
From the Office of Economic Development's perspective, we work with the local business community to ensure that they're not just surviving, but actually thriving.
We love our community, and we want to be able to give back to Milpitas.
The relationship that we have with the city, how much we contribute to them and they to us, and then the community is key.
It's really been a great community for us, and we don't have any plans of moving in the next 40 years.
Manufacturing Day 2019 was a huge success, and we look forward as the City of Milpitas to continue on this effort as an annual event.
Hey, what a great video, huh? Great job, Alex. That's Alex Andrade, our Economic Development Director here in the City of Milpitas. Just appreciate all your hard efforts, not just for economic development, but for community development as well. And so tonight, we're celebrating an incredible achievement. Manufacturing Day actually happened on October the 4th of 2019, and we held our third annual Manufacturing Day. It's a celebration of modern manufacturing meant to inspire the next generation of manufacturers. With over 75 attendees, including students from Milpitas High School and Cal Hills, community leaders and elected officials, the third annual Manufacturing Day exceeded expectations from all fronts. Milpitas is proud to be a hub for innovation and ideas. And as a member of this great city council, it is my hope that this event will continue to inspire students and connect them to outstanding opportunities in advanced manufacturing that can positively impact our local community and the world. The involvement of our city partners and city sponsors is essential in preparing students for manufacturing careers today and in the future. They say manufacturing is a way to break into the middle class and elevate oneself socio-economically. I want to thank all the supporters and participants for continuing to inspire our students to keep reaching higher. I want to congratulate all city staff members that helped make the third annual Manufacturing Day in Milpitas a success. I know I've seen Daniel Degu, Olivia, and I know there's much more. We look forward to more community partnerships in the future for the businesses that are here with us this evening. I want to continue to thank all the people that made this Manufacturing Day a success. The Milpitas Unified School District, the NUSD fam, Superintendent Cheryl Jordan, she's over here. MHS Principal Francis Rojas with the scarf. No baron tonight, huh? No baron, okay. Cal Hills High School Principal Carl Stice. English teacher Brian McGary. Business Academy teacher Andrea Hutchinson, how you doing? And from the Milpitas Chamber of Commerce, Tina Broyles. And moving to the business partners, we have Flex Casey McNeil. Over here, there you are. And from Milpitas sanitation, they're not here this evening, but this certificate will be accepted by Tina Broyles on behalf of MSI. Thank you very much. Let's see, what else is on here on the list? From the Economic Development and Trade Commission, we have Chris Norwood and Juliet Gomez. Oh, where's Juliet? Yeah, I'm going to have to let her know about this one. Headway Technologies. We want to thank Headway Technologies. Next up, semi. And last here, I'm just reading off here, Onanan. Yes. Okay, we're going to do another roll call here. We have commendations when I read your business. Please do come up if you're here. There's no roll call sheet, but we'll give it a try. Onanan, are you here? Okay, we'll say, go mail it. And next up, we have TDK Headway Technologies. Okay, want to thank them? And Flex, I know Flex is here. Come on. And we want to welcome Casey. Casey's just been a tremendous supporter of our community for years and years that we're counting now. So Casey, every time I see you or I see your name, I really appreciate everything you do. And he's a Milpitas resident, how about that? And let's go to the semi foundation. Okay, I don't see anybody here. Keep going here. The Milpitas Chamber of Commerce, come on down. And I'm going to do two here at a time because I know Chris Norwood's here, and he's always serving more than one purpose in the cities. I know he's committed to all parts of the community. So I want to welcome Chris Norwood down here to represent the Milpitas Economic Development and Trade Commission. Chris, come on down. And at the same time, I want to welcome the Milpitas Unified School District. Everybody come on down here to receive the commendation, and we want to thank you for your support for Manufacturing Day. Okay, that's it with presentations. And we'll get back up to the dais and continue to conduct the business of Milpitas. Okay, moving on to public forum. Oh, Vice Mayor Nunez.
If I could, just before the superintendent and the school board member leave, I just wanted to say that last week, there was an exceptional event where we had community conversations. And it's often, I often say that we have the best superintendent there is in this county, and I think I have to expand that area. And after watching the school board vice president there, we are lucky to have you both in this city because you care so much about the parents and the students and everyone really in this city. So I just want to thank you for taking the time to participate, organize, and allow us to share in that event. So thank you both very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thoughtfully said, Vice Mayor, thank you very much. Moving on to public forum, those in the audience are invited to address city council on any subject not on tonight's agenda. Speakers must come to the podium, state their name and city residence for the clerk's record, and limit spoke remarks to tonight, a one minute since we are behind schedule. As an item not listed on the agenda, no responses required from the city staff or the council, and no action can be taken. Council may instruct the city manager to place the item on a future meeting agenda. The public forum will now begin. I welcome all members of the chamber to join the conversation. I do see a request here for Anu Nakka. Are you here? Come on up, welcome. Oh, the other side, you go on the other side. Yeah, no worries. With the light on, yes, there's a light on the microphone. Yep, you got it. There you go. Welcome, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor, and all the council members. I am from Synet Elementary PTA representing, and we would like to cordially invite the entire board for our STEM Fair event, which is on March 6th at John Synet Elementary in the evening, 5:30 to 7:30 PM. And I know Mr. Mayor is there every year, and he graces our event. So we would, on behalf of the entire school and PTA, I would like to invite you all for the event. It's a STEM Fair.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here this evening and inviting us all. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you. Appreciate you. Yes. Amazing event. Yes.
Rob Means, 1421 Yellowstone. And I want to thank you, Mayor, for making sure that we got the PRT project that we're going to be building down around the Bart Station onto the transportation subcommittee agenda. And that, of course, is happening next Wednesday at 4:30 downstairs in the committee room. And I'm inviting everyone to come out that has any questions or concerns about the project. We're going to be doing a fair amount of listening to the council members that are in attendance so that we've got a much better idea of what their questions and their concerns might be, and we can get those addressed at that point in time. And that would be a good time for members of the audience to hear more about the project, find out what the council concerns might be, and to actually express their own concerns or questions so that we can get those addressed and not waste a lot of time at the council meeting here. I'm sure the council will follow your lead on this one. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Nunez.
Yeah, so city attorney, since I would be interested in attending that and maybe ask a few questions, I will put this at three.
The only question I have, is it an event sponsored by the city or is it an outside event?
It's our own transportation subcommittee.
Okay. So let me, you could attend that, but you wouldn't, if you're not on the subcommittee, you cannot participate. But we could talk about logistics and maybe how that happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Public forum continues. All are welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Tran, Vice Mayor Nunez, and council members Fan and Montano. And I know Councilmember Green is somewhere, but I want to say hi to her tonight, too. I'm not sure how we all can get our thoughts down from three minutes to one minute. I know I was at the Rules Committee on Friday, and I was just shaking my head. How can people come in with a three-minute, you know, thought process that they created mindset of three minutes, and then they have to knock it down to one minute? And so I really want to just be here tonight to ask you to reconsider the three minutes down to one minute conversation that we had on, or you guys had on Friday. And if you're going to do the one minute, then possibly say ahead of time, notify the community ahead of time that it won't be three minutes. It's really one minute because for the last few council meetings that I've been at, it's always been one minute. So it's really hard to get our thoughts across in one minute sometimes. And so I know I'm over, but please reconsider.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Public forum continues. Yes. Frank, come on down.
Evening, Frankie Smith, past president of the chamber. I'm going to do this tonight without the flyer. Just a reminder for the upcoming Chamber of Commerce crab feed and auction, and that is going to be on Friday, March 6th, at Napropodak Hall. And if anybody's interested in getting tickets, there's a few days left for the early bird discount ticket. Goes up to $60 around the middle of the month. And so we're all welcome to come, and we hope to see you there. And contact Chamber office at 408-262-2613, or go online at milpetischamber.com. Get your tickets.
How are ticket sales going, sir?
According to CJ, they're going well.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public forum continues. All are welcome. Yes, Mr. Montemeyer.
Voltaire Montemeyer of Milpitas, mayor, vice mayor, city manager and staff. I'm surprised. I have a personal letter also from Card Guartino congratulating us, congratulating me on what we do in our valley. Yeah, in here is a long list of big companies, big, big companies, board officers, board members, big, big companies. So he really deserves the key. Yeah, down there, up to, anyway, he's not like, down here is the 49ers. Imagine at the bottom is the 49ers. There will be time that the Niners will be championing Super Bowl. Thank you.
Public forum continues. All are welcome. I'm looking around. Now would be your time. I kindly ask you if you're here for the public forum. Now would be your time. Look to my left, look to my right. Going once, going twice. The public forum has concluded. Moving next to announcements, I'll look to the city manager, Steve.
Our staff has no announcements.
Thank you very much, Steve. And we're going to council member Fan.
Yes, I'd like to request at the February 18th city council meeting that that council consider implementation of Laura's Law and develop policies related to conservatorship. You know, as you know, Laura's Law is a state law that allows for local jurisdictions to mandate treatment, mental health treatment for the severely, for those with severe mental health needs. So, you know, that's something that the county has been working on, and I'd love for us to have a discussion on that. I'd also like to use this opportunity to request at a future City Council meeting, perhaps at either the first or second meeting in March, whatever fits our workload for us to consider a responsible construction ordinance, which is really an extension of the wage theft policy that the city has adopted previously. I have a copy of the ordinance with me. I'll share that with the city attorney, but this is for a future City Council meeting.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. I support both. The first one really is important, I think, for our community and for the whole county, and I would say the region. I know during my years as a social worker here in this county, working for the Valley Homeless Healthcare Program, mental health and/or substance abuse were the two very sad issues that plagued a lot of good folks out in our community. I get emails from residents with pictures by certain roads in this town, and I just know that those are the same areas that I've been working in and that the general population doesn't all too often see. And I know that from a policy perspective, we can start to prevent and address and solve some of the issues out there with homelessness and those that are gravely disabled or mentally unable. And so I do support those two. Thank you for bringing that up. Next up, we have Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. At this time for future agenda, I would like to ask the council for consideration to please bring back a policy in the lines with unhoused population. We have a lot of projects that are in the pipeline regarding transitional housing, and I'm still unclear on how Milpitas residents are going to be having the ability to have access to those units first. So I would like to, at this time, I'm not too sure if this is a staff direction. I'm not sure if it's somewhere. But two of the questions that I have, one is what are we doing proactively as a policy to implement in future housing developments? And my second question is how are we tracking our homeless population in Milpitas? Thank you.
I want to refer to the city attorney. I know there's maybe state law regarding how affordable housing is processed.
Is that a question, a current question?
Who's the authority for affordable housing and determining how persons get chosen?
So I don't want to debate, I think, any of the ideas that the council has tonight. I think if you want to see these topics debated amongst the council and then with staff potential input, we're happy to bring these items back to you. I don't know if there's, I know there's two, at least on, two council members in support of Councilmember Fan's request. Don't know, we don't have a process currently under this announcement section, but if there's a majority of you that want to see something come back, staff would take that direction. So I think we'd want to get a majority consensus on these three items. If council could just indicate a yes or no, whether you want to see these topics debated at future meetings and have an agenda item come back to you, we can take that direction.
Okay, one moment. Go to the Vice Mayor.
So I'm fine with the first two items coming back to us. The one on housing, the housing issues, is it possible to have that go to the housing subcommittee first so that we can? I'd like to hear more about what it is, to see if it's something we're working on already. So maybe that would be worth that, and if it's not, to bring it back to the full body for further discussion. That's what I'd like to do, and I'd like to, I'm not sure when our next one is scheduled, but I would like it before our next City Council meeting.
I think that's a great idea. The greatest housing subcommittee in the valley. Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Montano.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Yes, this item was brought before Julie, the former city manager. And the question was, when we build the 100% affordable housing at Sangol Court, we want it, first choice is our current Milpitas residents and especially those that are on free and reduced lunch at Milpitas Unified School District. From my understanding, that was, that is supposed to come before the housing subcommittee. The staff is supposed to be doing research and communicating with the county because it's a long process with the county of, I think, right now, there's, there's so much red tape with the county that that had to happen first. And I think our former city manager said that that has to happen first, and there's going to be communication with the county folks. And I'm not sure. But that would be a good idea to bring it before the housing subcommittee so that way we could make sure that Milpitas residents get first choice.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Montano. And we're going back to Councilmember Fan.
I think in regards to the inquiries, that can be transitioned into the housing subcommittee. However, I think that the topic of transitional housing is worthy of discussion as I'm aware of counties' intentions to submit proposals for transitional housing. And so, you know, we do want to review all of that in a timely manner as it's a time-sensitive matter. So in regards to the transitional housing aspect of it, I'm obliged to have that discussion.
Okay, so we'll go ahead, look to Chris. Chris, we'll go one by one. I think it sounded like to me the first two are supported, and then the third one would be going to the subcommittee.
We will take that direction, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, any further announcements by my colleagues? If not, we'll move forward to announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions. Chris, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd ask the mayor and council to please disclose any personal or financial conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda, and I'll start at the end. Councilmember Fan? Councilmember Montano? Councilmember Dominguez? Vice Mayor Nunez?
Vice Mayor Nunez.
Yeah, so I'd like to, there is one, it's on C8. So I'd like to ask, they have C8 removed. We are not going to be asking for a fee waiver.
Thank you. So item eight will not be considered by the council this evening. And then Mayor Tran.
No.
Thank you. I'd also ask the mayor and council to please disclose any campaign contributions of 100 or more received within the last 12 months from any party entering into a contract with the city on tonight's agenda or any development project applicant on tonight's agenda. Councilmember Fan? Councilmember Montano? Councilmember Dominguez? Vice Mayor Nunez? And Mayor Tran?
None.
Let the record reflect none to both questions with the modification to the agenda recommended by Councilmember Nunez, or Vice Mayor Nunez. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Moving next to approval of agenda, looking to my council.
Move approval of the agenda.
We got a motion by Vice Mayor Nunez. You have a second by Councilmember Dominguez. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. And we're now at the consent. If there's any items that members would like to pull, pull from the consent, I will go ahead and pull item number nine. And look to the Vice Mayor or the council. And Vice Mayor Nunez.
I just, for the record, wanted, I have nothing to pull. Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Next up, Councilmember Fan.
I just want to, on behalf of the council, thank the Vice Mayor for this comment. And
Truly thank, yes.
I'd like to add items 12 and 13 onto consent.
I support that. Looks like there's support. I don't see any objections. Okay.
I'd like to move the consent calendar as modified.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Nunez. We have a second by Councilmember Montana. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. And I know typically we reserve pulled items and address them at the end, but I'd like to ask for the council to support moving item number nine to the forefront. Okay, we got it. Okay, let's go to item number nine. Consider community member request to rename Albert Augustine Jr. Memorial Park to Albert Augustine Jr. Memorial Park of Sunny Hills. And we have our Recreation Services Director Renee. Welcome, Renee.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Staff is here to answer questions you may have about this item. We did receive a request to rename the park from Henry Nichols. He's here tonight. The item was discussed at the January Parks and Rec Commission meeting. We did have members of the Albert Augustine family in attendance. And the motion that went at PRCRC was the recommendation that council's receiving tonight. So we have Mr. Nichols here, and we also have Eileen Augustine here as well from the family. If there's questions for them.
Thank you very much, Renee. I want to recognize the Augustine family for being here in the chamber this evening. Truly a legacy family of Milpitas, and we have a great embrace and love for your family. I would like to welcome the family up first to speak if they wish. It's an optional, yes, please come on up. Welcome, welcome. And I have speaker cards here. I know I saw members of the Sunny Hills and the greater community here. So if you're listening to me out there, now's the time. Come on in and join us. Yes, welcome.
Thank you. On behalf of my family, thank you for your service to the community that my father loved so much. He was a servant. This was not a community he lived in, it was a community he loved. He attended multiple meetings after working a 50-hour week. He attended, he participated in everything regarding this city, specifically in Sunny Hills, including the, you know, the Sunny Hills Community Breakfasts. In October of 92, my father got a call saying that the city council was trying to push through a measure that would cut funding for Sunny Hills. He went to that meeting even though he was sick, and he fought tooth and nail and preserved Sunny Hills. And he collapsed at the end of that meeting, was taken to a hospital where he later died. I just wanted everyone to recognize that he, his last act in life was protecting Sunny Hills. And to have him remembered is very important to my family, especially after losing my brother on three weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask for these speakers here first to join us up here at the podium. Mr. Henry Nichols. And we're, we'll take public comment.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm pleased on the recommendation. It's just the wording that I'm looking at. So it's going to be changed to Albert Augustine Jr. Memorial Park of Sunny Hills. Not the way it was written, I take it. It was just, looks like a typo.
Yes.
Mayor, if I may, there was a small typo on the recommendation. So tonight, the decision before City Council is to rename Albert Augustine Jr. Memorial Park to Albert Augustine Jr. Memorial Park of Sunny Hills.
Well, there are some people that want it to say Sunny Hills Albert Augustine Jr. Park, but I'm just happy to have Sunny Hills put back in there. And I don't want to take anything away from the Augustines. And you heard her say that her father loved Sunny Hills, which I do also. And I think Sunny Hills Park needs to have, I think Sunny Hills Park needs to have the name Sunny Hills put up back on there. Since Mr. Augustine did love Sunny Hills, let people know what he cared about. I mean, all the new people that are coming in, nobody knows it was Sunny Hills Park. Nobody knows Mr. Augustine. I also think there should be a plaque or something saying who he is and a little bit about our community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Montano.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols, for bringing that. I know that we had spoken about this back when Rhoda Shapiro had her kickoff for her, for her, was it her, the Milpitas beat? And then we spoke about this, and so, so I mentioned to you that about the Sunny Hills, naming, renaming Sunny Hills Park to Sunny Hills Park. So you filled out the application, and I'm glad you did. And, but I would still like to see it Sunny Hills, because that was the original, and everybody loves Sunny Hills, you know. I knew, I knew Mr. Albert Augustine. And when we formed the Sunny Hills Improvement Association, he came on that one, that one time when we were fighting, Bob Peckham and I were fighting to get the city to put in the services that were, that the city had neglected. I would like to see it Sunny Hills slash or dash Augustine Memorial Park. That's my recommendation because it was, it was, that was the original name. So, so I want to know your thoughts. Are you okay with that? Okay. Sunny Hills, it would still preserve the memorial park for Mr. Albert Augustine. So Sunny Hills Albert Augustine Memorial Park, or Junior Memorial Park. So I'd like to make that recommendation to the city council.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Montano. I support that recommendation, and we're going to the Vice Mayor. And I just want, we will do, you have more speaker cards? Okay. Sorry. All right. Next up, we have Victor Villanueva. Welcome. I see your sweater. How you doing?
Thank you for letting me come up here and speaking my piece. Victor Villanueva. My shirt says Sunny Hills Original. Congress probably looking at me and recognized my last name. Were the original owners of our house in Sunny Hills. So it's a big feeling for me that there was a reason why the park was named Sunny Hills Park, and there was a reason why there was a memorial. So I am in total agreeance with what you're saying. Sunny Hills Park and my memory of Augustine family, however it would be, but I am supportive of adding the Sunny Hills name to the park. I live seven houses down the street. I live on Cuero Street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Love seeing folks come out that aren't regulars like some of our other great residents. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Guy Haas. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Guy Haas. How you doing, Guy? Good seeing you.
Good to be here. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Microphone, sir, if I may ask you to move the microphone toward the beard. Thank you.
I too want to speak in favor of getting the name Sunny Hills out there earlier in the signage. No disrespect at all to Albert Augustine Jr., but we need a little more visibility of Sunny Hills itself in the area where we've lost Sunny Hills United Methodist Church as a landmark, and we need help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next up here for this item, we have Jackie Romero.
Good evening. Thank you once again, Jackie Romero, Milpitas. I just want to take a moment and thank you, Mayor Tran, for even though you couldn't answer what I said earlier, you didn't cut anybody off so far, since me. So I just want to thank you for that, because that shows your commitment to hearing our community speak. So I'm also from Sunny Hills. My parents bought the house back in 1985, and we bought it from them in 2004. And we're right around the corner from Sunny Hills Park, I mean Albert Augustine's Park, sorry. So I grew up calling it Sunny Hills Park. And so I think it'd be great to merge those two names, and I just want to say that I am for the change, name change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last speaker card here, and we'll make sure everybody gets a chance, Allison McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council, Allison McDonald. And I'm president of the Sunny Hills Neighborhood Association. And I want to express my thanks on behalf of the association for your consideration of this item. I believe Carmen's been talking about this for a while. And especially since we have lost the landmark of Sunny Hills United Methodist Church on Dixon, there's not a lot left, there's not a lot of people left who remember Sunny Hills, and it was such an important historical event when Sunny Hills was created as the first intentionally integrated community in the United States. And the city of Milpitas did a wonderful thing, the way it built parks along that the Hetch Hetchy right of way and created the green way there. It's one of the greatest assets of our city, I think. But to recognize that that park is in Sunny Hills, that it was, you know, when I posted this on Running Out of Time, I posted it on various Facebook pages, and people were like, what? Don't change Sunny Hills Park to something else.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, it was changed a while ago.
Thank you very much.
We want to put it back.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're continuing to take public comment. If you didn't fill out a speaker card, it's okay. Everybody gets a chance to come up here and join the conversation. I think I see Mr. Montana, Mayor, come on up here.
Welcome, Mayor, Milpitas. I'm coming from three angles. I'm also with the SNA, Sunny Hills Neighborhood Association. I'm with the Parks Commission. We talk about it. And anyway, the number three may be a little bit harder. The number three, I will just add, there are, or there is sentiment if a place is, or any establishment that's named after your family after. And there may be some originality also to consider. We have 34 parks in Milpitas, and it's really hard, it's it's a big study among the five of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We'll continue with the public comments. If you haven't had the opportunity to speak, now would be your time. I'll look to my left, I'll look to my right. I don't see any further requests. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Yes, yes, gentleman here in the aisle. Please state your name and residence.
Hurrish Mar Mata, the resident of the city of Milpitas. Good evening to Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all Councilmembers. But I think it's very important that, you know, we realize, you know, once, that, you know, all the parks, you know, located in the city of Milpitas, how they are named. Because changing the name of one park, you know, this would make a constitution rule of having be changed for the other parks as well. And somebody would, you know, request, you know, such as well. So changing the name, if it does, you know, change the significance of a park itself, I think it should be fine. It still, you know, carries the values of it, but what is more important is to know that, you know, that once, you know, this has been changed, you know, the future requests, you know, would also, you know, come, you know, in the same manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Public comment continues.
Good evening, Council. I wanted to remind you that Sunny Hills Neighborhood Association sent in a letter of support for the name change, but I think we emphasized in that, that Carmen Montano's suggestion of putting Sunny Hills at the front was probably a better place. People are going to shorten it. My daughters, my granddaughter Isabel, her name got shortened to Izzy. And the name of this park is going to get shortened either Sunny Hills Park or Augustine Park. And, you know, how it gets phrased, and I'd like to see it be Sunny Hills Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comment continues. Please be welcome. All are welcome. Okay. Looking to my left, looking to my right. I don't see anybody else, so that's it with public comments. I want to thank everybody who spoke. This is certainly a community item on tonight's agenda. With that being said, let's go to the Vice Mayor.
So first, I will go with the majority of the Council with regard to the name change. I sat through the Park and Rec Commission meeting when they had the discussion, and they sort of had the same discussion there. So I'll leave it for those that have been here a great length of time. But what what I wanted the Council to sort of look at, and maybe you touch upon it a little bit, Renee, is what's involved, because at the end of the day, for me, it's more than just the park, it's that community. And if we don't do something to put more things out in that community as, as like the church that no longer has Sunny Hills, and those things start going away, the only thing we will have is the park. And I think I talked to Mr. Wilson as we were leaving. We talked about having a walking tour where we would put things out at certain places throughout the community, that important spots, where we could have either a stepping stone with what took place there, who, or who lived there, some type of video that's, that's protected. They could talk about what was going on there. Or something that, that it was more embedded in the community itself, so that as things change throughout the years, those things do not. So you don't lose really the essence of the community, and you don't have just one spot, because I agree, whoever said, things are shortened. I just think we need to look at, at that community and say, what are we going to do there so that in 10 years, there are certain things that we want persons to still remember? And your commission is the right commission to look at those. And I don't know if that got back to you or not, but besides me. But so with a name change, what is that, what really happens?
So those are great questions, and this conversation is actually marrying almost exactly what happened at the Parks and Rec Commission. So there's some just logistical details with changing a park name, one of which is switching up the sign, and that is indicated in the fiscal impact of this agenda request. The other things that will happen is that we will slowly start changing publications that list the park name on it. So that is our activity guide, any events that might be happening out there. Those will all get updated as we republish things. Online park maps, those will change as well. To your point about installing things in the park that have a more lasting legacy, one of the other items that's coming to this Council tonight is the Parks and Rec Commission work plan. And one of their projects is called Historical Park Markers. And so it's a two-phase, two-phase project. The second phase does exactly that. They would come back to the Council with a proposal for installing markers, footpaths, plaques, what have you, that really speak to the history of the park, who they're named after, and the history of the neighborhood. So that is something that's coming back to you guys in the future. So it has been a topic of discussion before. And specifically to this park, some of the commission comments were changing the name, yes, but we really want to tell the story of who Albert Augustine was and what Sunny Hills was, and you're going to, you're going to achieve that with a different project.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I'll take a moment here to contribute to the discussion. I am in support of renaming the park to Sunny Hills Albert Augustine Jr. Memorial Park. I can't tell you all the memories I've had at Sunny Hills Park. And it's really commonly referred to as Sunny Hills Park. But I do understand every park in Milpitas is named after a contributor to Milpitas' fabric, so I do want to respect that, but at the same time, equally, it has been Sunny Hills Park. Kids at Russell Middle School, after school, someone might ask another, student might ask another student, hey, what are you doing? I'm going to Sunny Hills Park. That's how it happens, and the park represents a safe space for diversity. And the term or the title Sunny Hills Park is really, if you look it up in the dictionary, the meaning should say a safe space for diversity, no matter who you are, where you're coming from, what you look like, how much money you have for ice cream, it doesn't matter, you go to the park. And there's a lot of history in the park. There's more history in Sunny Hills Park than any other park in Milpitas. And so the conversations in the community are really about Sunny Hills Park. But I, I do think that we do need to recognize Mr. Augustine. And that's a step, I think the Vice Mayor said, we should take through the proper channels, which I sincerely support. Oftentimes, we go to Jones Park, Strickroth Park, and as a person growing up, who grew up in Milpitas, I quite honestly couldn't tell you about who these people were. And to really honor your father, maybe we should do something to ensure that our figures in Milpitas' history are recognized as we have with Martin Luther King or Cesar Chavez. Let's work together to support the Vice Mayor's idea to do history justice. And renaming something is hard, anywhere, anywhere in America. And this is something that, to our community, is, I dare say, common sense. This is Sunny Hills Park. It was Sunny Hills Park to start with. And so we are really doing justice to our history by putting Sunny Hills at the forefront of this park, and everybody has their own experiences in the neighborhood, and I grew up down the street. I didn't grow up in Sunny Hills, grew down south of Jacqueline, but grew up down the road. But I always rode my bike up north. I never, I always rode north, never went south too much, really. Always went to Sunny Hills, yeah. And so I asked the Council to support Mr. Nichols, who's been a resident here since, thank you, sir, and Councilmember Montana, who, you know, it's a community effort, and I asked, we all join this community tonight to ensure that we can rename this to Sunny Hills Albert Augustine Jr. Memorial Park. Those are my comments. Next up, Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First and foremost, I love this project. Thank you to all of you out there, and Councilmember Montana, for your leadership, as well as other members who have been actively involved in this role through either your commission or just having conversations. I know, I feel like we've had so many conversations, not only during the breakfast time of how important this is, not only to just emphasize Sunny Hills and the naming of the park, but continue the legacy of why this park was named. So thank you so much for coming to our City Council tonight. I really appreciate your attendance. I know one of the things personally that I, I love community engagement. I love how we are all able to work together to move an idea forward. One of the things that, one of my dreams is to see Sunny Hills as a historical designation from the state of California. And I've said that many times. It's, one of the designations would allow for a continued historical recognition. And I know that is a tough task, but I know you could do it. And if you need any help, let me know, because I'm willing to help you. We've done it before, and it could be done. One of the things with historical preservation, once it gets considered a landmark from the state of California, is we won't see things like the church that is no longer named, or we don't see any legacy. And so I think that will be part of the plan. What I'm, I'm kind of learning from Vice Mayor. I'm listening, and I think that's going to move into that subcommittee. So I'm looking forward to seeing the pathways. I think that's critical for us to have signage and definitely recognize the importance of this park as a first integrated community that there was in this nation. And so I definitely, you know, love the ideas that I'm hearing up here. One of the things, it sounds like there might be a modification to the name, which I totally agree with. I was wondering during the modification, I would like to see, I know we're going to be talking about what we put in the park, but I would like to see that language added into this, since we're talking about it. I want to be respectful of the family. It seems like there's a huge legacy there, especially if he came to a council meeting right before his passing. I think that is something that the Council needs to recognize. And so I would ask our city manager, would that be a possibility? Because it sounds like there's going to be a friendly amendment to change the name, to put Sunny Hills first. Would we be able to also put a plaque memorial with the history of Mr. Augustine in the park?
That would be fine if agreed by the Council.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your consideration, and thanks again for your work.
Thank you very much. Next up, Councilmember Montana.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Along the lines what Councilmember Nunez had mentioned as some type of commemoration of Sunny Hills. When I served on the Sunny Hills Improvement Association, Neighborhood Association, as one of the board members, we brought this up, about the restoring the name of Albert Augustine Park to Sunny Hills Park. We also spoke about different sites in the neighborhood that have a lot of history. For example, one of the, I mentioned this to Allison, that where the United Auto Workers plant, not plant, the building. So we were, yeah, the Union Hall was right there, and, and so I had mentioned, well, maybe we should have a plaque, some type of a plaque. I know right now nothing's built, but in the future, when something gets built, we need to have a plaque designating that site. That's where the United Auto Workers Hall was, in that entrance. Right? And so we want to put a plaque, and so we spoke about that, and I'd like to see that move forward. What other sites?
I support that.
There was some, there was some, but that one was the, was the main one, the naming, renaming of Sunny Hills Park, restoring it. And but now we're, today we're moving to, to make it Sunny Hills Albert Augustine Memorial Park. And then we also spoke about a bench or a plaque or something in regards to Albert Augustine at the park. So, so those conversations have already happened and occurred, and I like Councilmember Nunez's ideas of moving this forward. I'm pretty sure that's what you meant, right? Some type of commemorations. And then not only that, but actually throughout the city, because we had spoken about this before. And I also want to mention, I did serve on the Santa Clara County Historical Heritage Commission. And it is really hard for the state to, and this is really tough, but we could do it in our city, though, to we could do it in our city, though, to commemorate a historical site. But with that, if nobody else said anything, oh, nevermind.
A couple more requests, a couple more requests here. Okay. Sunny Hills, so special. I know there's, this discussion is very heartfelt, emotional. That's what Sunny Hills is. Councilmember Fan.
Yes. I, like Vice Mayor Nunez, I will go with whatever the majority decides. At the end of the day, what's important to me is, one, we pay the appropriate homage to the people who have contributed, you know, their time, their work, and really their legacy here in Milpitas into our community. So that said, certainly, Mr. Augustine Junior is worthy of that recognition. I think that, well, I want to make sure that we do it appropriately, that his legacy isn't forgotten inside just the name, right? Because you can name anything after anyone, right? And it's about how you follow up with it, how it's perceived by the community. And so I think a good example is probably at San Jose State. As you know, they have a statue of Tommy Smith and John Carlos, right? And I think that, you know, really does show and educate the community and really empower a lot of people. Now, they didn't name that plaza, Tommy Smith and John Carlos. They can. That's certainly an option. I think that, that fiscal aspect of it, that visual says a lot more. So, you know, if we want to do Sunny Hills Park of Albert Augustine Junior, we can certainly do that. And I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure that we do pay homage visually in some way. So, you know, if we want to give some leeway to perhaps the Arts Commission to do something in that light, I think we can really be creative there. And, you know, that's, that's just my thoughts. But in terms of the name, I'll go with whatever name you guys want.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. And this is definitely, I feel, the community's desire. And just thinking about, you know, one thing you mentioned, Councilmember Fan, I appreciate you. One thing you mentioned was really being thoughtful of Mr. Augustine. And for what his contribution, significant contribution is to the neighborhood of Sunny Hills and the city of Milpitas, I hope that he would be in heaven happy about this, because if he loves Sunny Hills, and if, then he would know Sunny Hills Park, and the joy that hearing Sunny Hills Park would mean to every single family in Sunny Hills. Because anytime a child or a parent would ask their child, where are you going? And they'd say, Sunny Hills Park. And they knew it was a place that their child can have a great time in, or barbecues, and occasions, and things. And so I dare say that the reference to Sunny Hills Park is something that's just overflowing with positivity. And it's really an honor to be in the same sentence as not just your father, but also Sunny Hills Park. Vice Mayor Nunez.
So my goal is not, I don't really need to say that more about this issue, but I want to make sure I understood that in your work plan is a process to, in the naming or renaming of parks, what type of signage and other types of identifiers would be placed there? Is that what I understood?
So the project, there's two phases. The first one is to go through the 34 parks and make sure that we have the full names of the people that the parks are named after. For instance, we know Cardoza Park. Not everybody knows that it's Tom Cardoza that the park is named after. So those are things that we want to go through and make sure that those things are captured and memorialized for historical purposes. The second phase is putting in the markers, which could be plaques, it could be stones, it could be, sky's the limit on how the city wants to go about it.
Maybe not the sky's the limit.
Within fiscal responsibility, yes, Vice Mayor. So it could be a number of different ways that people put in markers in parks that are very creative and functional. So that would be telling the story of the park. It could be in the neighborhood or the person that it's named after. So that is phase two. So phase one is starting now, and that will be, we estimate, completed by the end of this fiscal year. The second phase, which is the markers, that's a project where they would need to bring proposals and then fiscal impact back to the city council.
So with that, if, but, yeah, yeah, I'm seeing your name. So what I'd like to do is make the second half of a motion, which is letting, now, is that going to be done by both the Parks and Rec Commission and the Arts Commission?
That's a great question. It could be a joint project for the markers. If it is simple placking, then it could be accomplished with one. But if there's interest from the council to incorporate more creative marker ideas, then it's an opportunity for there to be a joint project between the two commissions.
So I'm not a creative type, but the head over your shoulder keeps nodding. So it's catching my eye. So I'm assuming, and I heard Councilman Fan say that art commission should be included. So my second part would be to follow through with that recommendation that we've already voted on it.
Okay.
But that this part have a priority.
Okay.
And that the name of the park, I would refer to the next person that I see here. Because number one, even though I've been here now 13 and a half years, I keep being reminded that really isn't long enough yet. Be considered being here of any length of time. So I'm going to refer to the person to my right, Councilman Montano.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Moving over to Councilmember Montano.
Thank you, Vice, thank you, Mayor.
Both, both, yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Mayor. Okay.
You're welcome.
So, but before I, before I make the motion, I wanted to, some clarification. When the previous council that I was on, 2012 to 2016, we used to have a park naming, park facility naming committee, subcommittee. Is that still in effect, or is it defunct? Or what's going on with that?
So it's a park streets and facilities.
And Marcia Greeley was on it. Marcia Greeley and I served on it.
It was a city council subcommittee that dealt with naming of streets, parks, and facilities. So that subcommittee was sunsetted, and so it's no longer active.
I think we should bring that back before any future items, for future things at parks or whatever. But aside from that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this park to Sunny Hills Albert Augustine Memorial Park. And then any other plaques and so forth can go on to the, bringing back that, that, subject to council approval, to bring back the, that committee.
We have a motion by Councilmember Montano. We have, let me, this, let me start over. We have a motion by Councilmember Montano. We have a second by Councilmember Fan. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Nichols. And it is one heck of an evening in Sunny Hills. I know the stars are shining bright down on Sunny Hills this evening. Mr. Muscata, how you doing? I see you too. Sunny Hills Original, sir. I see you with the hooded sweater. Yeah, thank you for being here tonight. We're going to move on to conduct other business that we have on our agenda. I just want to take a moment to really thank the city council for, Councilmember Montano, for allowing me to be a part of this vote. One day, I'm going to look back on my time here in public service, and I'm going to remember this as one of the top 10 most special items that we'll have voted on. So thank you for allowing me to be a part of the team. Okay, moving on here to community services and sustainable infrastructure. Item number 10 is receiving update and presentation from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And welcome Elaine and our special guest. If you could introduce yourself.
Oh, I'll introduce myself. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I'm Elaine Marshall, Deputy Public Works Director. As you know, the city of Milpitas signed on to Silicon Valley Clean Energy in November 2017, with service starting in June 2018. We just wrapped up our first full calendar year of service from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and thought it was a good time to invite the Silicon Valley Clean Energy CEO, Gaurish Balachandran, to provide an update to the city council on SVCE service and decarbonization efforts. Additionally, as community choice energy agencies have emerged as key players in regional and statewide discussions about PG&E restructuring, Gaurish will also share some information on the latest developments in that area, and also speak to SVCE's plans going forward. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Gaurish.
Thank you, Elaine. Thank you, Mayor Tran. Members of the city council, good to see you again. Vice Mayor Nunez, you were on our board last year, and thank you for your service. So we are composed of 13 cities at Silicon Valley Clean Energy, as you can see in the slide, and you are our newest member, joined in 2018. Thank you, Councilmember Montano, for being on our board. And we have the alternate director, Elaine Marshall. So I just wanted to step back a little bit to tell you about how a community choice energy agency works. We essentially, as the picture shows, we've replaced PG&E in the buying and building of energy supply. But then we utilize PG&E transmission lines to deliver our power to our customers. So we are partners with PG&E, and we work closely with them in delivering power to our customers. In terms of the kind of power that you get, we have two products that we provide our customers. One is what we call our Green Start Carbon Free, and the other is the Green Start Carbon Free and 100% Renewable. The majority of our customers take the product called Green Start, which you see on the left. And today, we provide this to our customers at a 4% discount to PG&E. All our member agencies have signed up for the Green Prime, which is on your right. Sorry, I have a typo there. It's not Green Start on the right, it is Green Prime. And that provides you 100% carbon-free and renewable energy. And all your city facilities are powered using this energy. We are contracting for a tremendous amount of new renewable power. And so far, we've contracted for 110 megawatts of wind power from New Mexico, two very large projects for solar and battery storage. And in the next six months, next four months, we're going to be contracting for six new projects that will take our renewable power supply to 40% of our total demand will come from new power supply resources, new renewable resources. So the majority of our budget, the majority of our costs comes, is devoted to power supply. And we spend about $240 million a year on developing new green renewable power supplies. My next two slides, I'm going to go over our achievements in 2019. The first slide is our regional achievements. And my next slide after that, I'll talk about the value and achievements for Milpitas. So here, we write from telling you how many accounts we have, 270,000. We serve close to about 600,000 people. And we have saved 28 million in electric savings for all customers. I'm sorry, again, I'll give you Milpitas numbers the next one. There's 28.7 million in savings for all our customers, and we've saved them $52.7 million from our inception. We, right to the bottom icon, we have saved 540 million pounds of CO2 that we've avoided with this new green energy. As far as Milpitas goes, the city has saved 5.3 million dollars since you've started at SVCE, the majority of those savings coming last year. We have 27,000 accounts that we serve in Milpitas. You've had a 98% reduction in the emissions from your utility providing electricity. So from where you were getting electricity from PG&E, and the emissions associated with electricity that we provide, which is basically 100% carbon-free, you have reduced your emissions dramatically. We also are in your community. We have provided sponsorship for several community events. And we also have participated, you have participated in events we have. We have a very exciting program called Bike to the Future for high schoolers, where we basically offer them prizes. And we have this competition where they build electric bikes, and then they take it through a kind of race. And we do provide them funding for building their bikes. So going to the next slide, we've coined the term future fit. We're going through a huge transition in our economy, right? We're moving from a fossil-fueled economy to an economy that is going to be powered by renewable energy. Our transportation is also going to be going electric and powered by clean electricity. So in this chart, when you look at the left-hand side, you see the economy being powered by clean electricity, and that's for all-electric living and transportation. That ends up with a clean community in the Bay Area and in Milpitas. There are lots of benefits in addition to saving money. It's also new kinds of jobs, and it improves public health. So we developed a decarbonization strategy and programs roadmap that was approved by the SVCE board in December of 2018. So in the bottom right of your screen, you'll see this, these three circles. And so there's overlap between power supply, which is clean, the built environment, which is a fancy complicated word for just buildings, which consume natural gas, and mobility, which is transportation. And right in the middle, there's energy efficiency and grid integration. I know you have an item on the agenda coming up after me, where several of these will actually be handled. Yeah, so why are we doing? Yeah, so why are we doing all this? When you, this is a rather complicated chart, but the main point of this is to show where the emissions are coming from, from electricity, from buildings, transportation. And you see this green arrow looking at the future. We have to reduce our emissions dramatically. And so this is where many of the programs that we are initiating have the scope to actually transform the way we live and we move. And this is something, it's not just SVCE. It's agencies and utilities and companies all over California and the United States, in some cases, the world, that are working on this. So a couple of slides on the built environment or buildings. We offered a program to replace gas water heaters with electric water heaters. We call them heat pumps. And it was just going to be 100 customers who are going to replace their water heaters. To really get a transformation in our water heater space, we have to be replacing 10,000 a year. It's a lot. So 10,000 a year, and we're going to have to do this for 20 years to replace the entire stock in our service area. That's a lot. So we're just starting off. We did 100, was very well subscribed. We went back to our board last month and we've expanded our rebate offering. And now our next target is 200 and we are going to offer rebates for a total of $500,000. Here, I want to thank the City Council on this slide for the regional reach code effort that we undertook. The City Council showed a tremendous amount of leadership in adopting this code. And this code applies to new construction. It doesn't apply to existing stock. And this is again, one of those things, you've got to start somewhere. And the fact that you have done this and cities across our service territory, you're one of, you were the third of our cities to adopt this. So thank you very much for this. I don't know whether you realize how much of an impact this is, not just in this region, but beyond this region. Because people start to hear about this and they say, really? These cities did this? Let me see what that model ordinance looks like because I want to adopt it in my city. And that's one of the things that we were looking at at SVCE and you're looking at and both Vice Mayor Juniors and Councilmember Montana have been involved in. It's like, what can you put in place that may be small but can be replicated elsewhere? So thank you very much, City Council, for this. I'm go through, I go to mobility now, just transportation. We led an effort over two counties, San Mateo and Santa Clara County, to basically tap into state money. So the state has money for electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Because to really get electric vehicles on the road, you need to have the equivalent of gas stations. You know, people can do their own thing of buying their own cars, but you need to have that infrastructure. You need to have roads, of course, but you need to have that charging infrastructure. And the state basically said, if you cities can put up some money, matching funds of your own, we'll free up some money too. So we led this effort. All of San Mateo and Santa Clara County were getting $33 million. And we've matched to an extent where the total funding is going to be 60 million. And so that $60 million is going to be released over these two counties for building new EV charging infrastructure. So this process is kind of controlled through the state, but we wanted to do something, just to give a little nudge, try to kind of direct that $6 million of the 33, which is coming to SVCE. And specifically, we were looking at, we have about 30 priority zones across our area. And we're telling these third parties, if you cite charging infrastructure there, we'll put a sweetener in. We'll give you 20% more. So they're going to get money from the state and our matching funds, but we'll give you a little extra if you put these EV chargers in these priority zones. So Elaine's part of a group we call the Member Agency Working Group and that's our member agencies from all over come together. So this input from Milpitas staff on where these priority zones ought to be. And we'll be putting out this, we are dealing with various infrastructure vendors and they'll be applying to the state and to us for these funds. We also are working on energy resilience. And if you see in the bottom left of the screen, you'll see again, we are working with a variety of other agencies, right from the East Bay Community Energy to one of the municipal utilities in Santa Clara County, to install up to 30 megawatts of batteries and energy storage in our residences and our businesses. So we should now, in the next few months, we put the RFP out in November. We've just got responses and we'll see how that plays out. Now, in addition to that, we are working with the Member Agency Working Group to come up with another RFP later this year, which will focus on city facilities and resilience in city facilities. And so far, the interest has been on planning and how we can actually develop plans for resiliency. So that's something that will be coming to you, or at least we'll be developing later this year. All right, so that's all about SVCE, about who we are, what we're doing, which is essentially, we're a provider of clean power to you at prices lower than the alternative. And in addition to that, we are also trying to, what we say, bend the carbon curve by being innovative in programs for mobility and for buildings. So I'm going to shift topics right now and talk about the very big picture on what's happening in our state. So PG&E filed for bankruptcy last January and just last Friday, they have issued their plan of reorganization. So it's many volumes thick. The one document I scanned is about 300 pages. But essentially, after a lot of zigging and zagging, they've come out with a plan. And the government, the first time they came out with this plan in December, the governor was not happy with it. And the governor basically said, this is DOA as far as he's concerned and he wanted changes made in the structure of PG&E's board. And he wanted the plan to be more financially viable. Subsequent to that, PG&E got together with some of the competing plan proponents, with the bondholders, and now they're all part of one plan. So now you have the bondholders and the shareholders pitching one plan. Some of the highlights of that plan, you know, right up front is it preserves worker rights. So all the IBW contracts are not only preserved for five years, but also salary increases for the next five years are baked into this plan. There's also, the board has been reconstituted. Governor Newsom wanted more California representation on the board. So there's going to be a minimum of 25% of board members from California with a target of 50%. They have some additional oversight over risk and safety with certain officer positions reporting to the CEO. So the plan right now is coming to its kind of last stages in the bankruptcy court in the next 30 days or so. These so-called disclosure statements are going to be sent out to thousands and thousands and thousands of people who are going to vote on this plan. It'll come back to the bankruptcy court, but then there's a parallel process at the CPUC. The CPUC also has to look at the plan and provide its approval. And the reason is PG&E, as part of its coming out of bankruptcy, needs about $5 billion from a wildfire fund that was created by the legislature last year. And in order for them to get access to that wildfire fund, they have to jump through certain hoops and the CPUC decides whether they've adequately done that or not. So let me talk about the other two plans that you've heard about. Mayor Licardo reached out to many of you. Thank you for those who have individually supported him and his plan. His plan is one where you would convert PG&E into a cooperative. And a cooperative is something like a credit union, essentially. It's customer-owned, but it's essentially a private entity. It's like REI or Kaiser Permanente or your credit union. So it's owned by customers, but it's private. Some of the benefits of that kind of system, one is you get lower cost of capital. If you have a lower cost of capital, given how much money PG&E has to spend on investing in infrastructure to keep us all safe from these wildfires, they have to invest a lot in their transmission and distribution system and in technology. They have to pay interest on debt that they issue. Their cost of debt is about 8%. A cooperative would have a lower cost of debt. So right away, another benefit of a cooperative plan is that you would have a lower cost of capital. You'll have more transparency and the plan also outlines preservation of worker rights. So I believe in the next couple of weeks, Mayor Licardo will have an announcement. I believe they are working on coming up with a financing strategy. They're also in touch with the governor's office, keeping the governor's office up to speed on where they are in developing this. I believe he sent an email to all those who have supported him, I think either yesterday or this morning, talking about the difference between his cooperative plan and the plan I'm going to talk about next, which is Senator Weiner's Municipal Utility District Plan. That was, we heard about that at SVCE. We got an email on that, I believe it was Wednesday night of last week. And we were invited to go to a press conference yesterday morning to support the plan. Where we are as an organization, as a trade association of CCAs, which is called CACCA, and at SVCE is we support a public power option. However, since we did not know the details of Senator Weiner's plan and we had not been involved in any discussions with him prior to his announcement, we did not want to go out there supporting the plan without knowing all the details. However, we did pass word to his office that we are in general support of public power and a public option and we would like to be involved with his office to get to the details of the plan. Here's what I know of the details of the plan. It's creating a municipal utility district where this municipal utility district would buy all of PG&E's assets. And then all worker rights would still be preserved. They're looking at finishing up the purchase of all the assets over a five-year period. And after that five-year period, if any city wants to become a municipal utility, they would have to wait one year and then basically buy those assets from the municipal utility district. Similar to the co-op plan, a municipal utility district will be able to issue low-cost capital, like you, Milpitas, you know. And that capital will probably be at a lower interest rate than even the co-op model. So it has some benefits, similar to the co-op model of lower council capital. It also has the benefit of transparency. Mayor Tran, you're talking about public forum right through, inviting the public to come in. We don't get to go into PG&E's board meetings, not allowed. But in these public agency meetings, it's all open. And so that's another kind of benefit that both these plans bring in. So where we stand at SVCE and CACCA, actually at the CACCA, which is the trade association of CCAs statewide, our board, which I happen to be on that board too, we have some principles on how we would view any of these restructuring models. We have about nine principles. I'm not going to go through them all, but I'll just tell you a couple of them. One, we start with improving affordability, which is essentially low cost of capital, keep rates down for our customers. Next is narrow the scope of PG&E. PG&E, we believe, has become too big to succeed. Over years, they've just taken on so much and now we have other parties who can do as good or a better job than them in certain parts of the business. So let's narrow the scope of PG&E, let them focus on the wires only and on public safety. So that's what we think they should do. Any kind of restructuring model should narrow the scope of PG&E. Demonstrate financial and governance transparency. It's like what you do here. Encourage customer and public ownership. So at CACCA, we're not taking a specific position on a municipal utility district or a co-op. We think both are worthy of getting into the public space, being debated and move forward. Of course, protect workers by honoring existing agreements. And last, meet or exceed environmental obligations. All this, I can send details of these principles if you want to. But I've been speaking for quite a while. I'm sure you all have questions. So I'm going to wrap up my talk and thank you again for your participation, SVC, and everything that you've done from reach codes to serving on our board.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to have you here with us this evening among the community. I want to take the time here now to go to the community for any public comments. So please have a seat here, not too far. You may receive a question. So we'll go ahead with the public comments, one minute each, please. And you have leadership here from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, your council. You have our Department of Public Works, Elaine here. So the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor Tran and council members. I have a, I love that we have this option in Milpitas and I thank the council for taking action on that a couple of years ago. My, I'm very interested in these various plans for restructuring PG&E. I'm very concerned about the municipal utility district plan because I fear that it will leave out the valley and other more rural and fire-prone areas of the state. And they need to be included in whatever restructuring that we do so that they, they can all benefit from any reduction in costs. And that's where the high costs are going to be. So we need to, to spread that out around the state, I think. So I would lean towards Mayor Licardo's cooperative plan. I grew up in Saskatchewan where co-ops were the norm. And I think that they're a great way, sort of an intermediary way between the large corporation that we've seen PG&E do and very small local things where you can't get everything done that you want to do because we are regional, we're statewide. So if you could answer some questions about the downside of the municipal utility district plan with regard to being able to include and cover all of those parts of California that... that need the most help?
So Senator Weiner's plan actually covers the entire service territory. No one's left out. The way the legislation's written, it would apply essentially to any investor on utility that has had a felony conviction in the last 10 years and more than a million customers with essentially PG&E's territory and covers the entire territory.
Thank you very much. Public comment continues.
Rob Mainz, 1421 Yellowstone, and PG&E is, in my mind anyway, a serial criminal. Why would we do anything for these guys? They've been bleeding us financially, taking that money and running rather than reinvesting it in the infrastructure that they're responsible for maintaining, an infrastructure that our entire civilization depends upon. We've seen a lot of big corporate crime over the last 10 or 15 years. They almost brought down our entire economy back in 2008. They're threatening to do it again. It's about time that we, the people, start standing up against these corporations and putting them in their place and letting them know when they do, when they cheat, break the rules and screw people, that they are not going to be allowed to continue business.
Public comment continues. Mr. Monta Mayor, yes.
I'm agreeing with the speakers. My only suggestion is there should be a precaution from the office of the governor or so. Do you have as good as a PG&E expert put a transition of operating instead, instead of PG&E as the government? I'm afraid, I know fossil fuel are not, I don't know when, in centuries. That's why the solar, all those windmills are helping now. But I think the reason before of this problem is the fires. We will go and solve how, how to prevent fires, the fires in California, even everywhere now, Australia. So yeah, we just be cautious. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Public comment continues. We have a special guest here from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And if you're here tonight, and especially those who've asked questions, certainly a pleasure to have the knowledge base here this evening. So look to my left, I look to my right, I don't see any, yes, please, yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. I think, you know, with the PG&E and the rest of the vendors we have around the clean energy projects, I think it is very important to understand that what are the alternatives that's been implemented by, by the, by the different cities as well as to know that, you know, what are the percolations, you know, that can come up with, you know, having the new energy company to take over in the city because it involves a lot of infrastructure costs as well as the technology, you know, that they are deploying. Also, the consequences of, you know, such technology onto the city, you know, when such kind of unforeseen event, you know, that would take place, something like a fire. As for the Mayor Licardo cooperative's plans, there are, there has been an arrangement that's currently in being placed and as well as the governor, Newsom is also, you know, taking the place, you know, on the PG&E's accounts. But I think, you know, what's important is to, is to weigh the alternatives and also, you know, find out the downside and the upside, you know, for both the projects and then...
Thank you very much, thank you very much, appreciate you. Public comment continues here. Don't hold back on me if you're in the audience and you'd like to speak. If not, I'll look to my left, look to my right. That's it with public comments. Thank you very much. We will bring the conversation around here to the dais and I'll look to my colleagues for any requests. First up, we have Vice Mayor Nunez.
So first, I am really thankful that you came tonight. I think you are one of the most thoughtful persons I've met on this topic. It is not just cost, it's not just looking at what's new. You are a policy advisor. I've watched you enough to see that, and I think that's one of the reasons you are on so many state and national boards on this issue. So I think we're lucky to have you with Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and that's to our benefit. So I'm going to try to break this into two areas. This last part is what I'm going to talk about first, or at least have a question about. So I know as a, as a council, we were all asked to sign on to Mayor Licardo's plan. And I, as one individual council member, did sign on and send it on. So I would look to first the city manager and such, and so I don't know if we're waiting for you to bring something forward or for the council, Montana person, Montana to bring something forward or you to bring, I'm not sure really what we're waiting for to make a decision or it's so far off, we don't have to. And maybe I'm sort of looking for that.
At this point, you know, one of the tactical things that Mayor Licardo did is having you provide individual support, you could, he could get things done fast.
He's probably right.
Yeah, because he wanted to gather region-wide support right away. And I think it was very effective. He has 185 elected officials have signed that letter of support, but it's in your individual capacity. I did go to the city's association and the city's association supported in general this Mayor Licardo's plan. But if we had to go to city councils across Northern California, it would have just taken too much time. So that's why he did it. I think from an effectiveness standpoint, it's pretty effective. I think it shows up in what Governor Newsom's saying. At this point, when you think about these two plans, there's nothing to do right now from a city council perspective. I think we've taken a position at SVCE. It wouldn't harm if you do want to take a position, we could come back to you with something. The municipal utility district plan is going to go through the legislature, and if it becomes law, then there's going to be another five years of work before those assets actually get purchased. So I think that's when you'll be asked to take action, similarly with Mayor Licardo's plan also.
Okay. And, and do you see a conflict between his plan and Senator Weiner's plan?
It's a, they're, they're different flavors. So to me, at this point, they're both, they're two flavors of what need to be considered because the status quo of PG&E being a for-profit entity that has a rather bad track record and their business model is just not conducive to our future. So to me, I think either one of these plans, they're going in the right direction. And because a municipal utility district is governed differently than a co-op, there are differences between the two. But I do believe if Governor Newsom comes out with some very strong actions, basically saying he wants a state takeover, the best ideas of both these plans will start to emerge.
Okay. So now if I can go back to your first part of your presentation, these will be quicker. How does all of this affect the request for no, no more, allowing no more gas used in new construction? Does this shorten it? Does this speed it up? What's happening with PG&E?
With PG&E? PG&E actually has been, I'd say there are two things. They've been supportive, they own a gas business, natural gas business, but they do recognize that that business is dying. So they've got to figure out in the next 10 years or so, how they wind up that business in a way. They're supportive of these reach codes. So actually, the first city in the Bay Area to adopt something like this was the city of Berkeley, and they adopted a gas ban in new construction, and PG&E supported that. So I think there are a number of players who would help because we are so much closer to the community. We were working with Elaine, we are working with your chief building official, Mr. Todd. Like that, we have connections with our council members, our large customers, so we were able to actually craft solutions that met your needs. The reach code that you adopted is not exactly the same as what the city of Saratoga adopted, what the city of Mountain View adopted. So I think we are able to actually do things that are tailored for our communities, but PG&E is so large, they're unable to do things like that.
And then my last question. The building of electric bikes done with the high school, is the idea just to give them that experience or to actually move them along the lines of, of manufacturing electric bikes?
Yeah, it's the former. It's mostly that. You know, some of these kids, they're, whether they're doing their science classes, et cetera, they're so smart that they're a future innovator and scientists and technologists, but we are not taking anything from them of that. We do have some other programs. For example, we've run hackathons. In fact, just last Friday and Saturday, we were up in San Francisco. We sponsored like a 30R hackathon on building, decarbonization and mobility. And we have about 100 people show up, create about 20 teams and they prototype software. And our pitch was the best three teams will get prizes, but anything they develop is theirs. And there are actually companies, there's a company that we're doing business with today that came out of a hackathon similar to the one we ran six years ago. And so they were actually there. So our thing is we want to promote innovation and how can we nudge with the limited funds we have?
So, so if I could, city manager, you know, I was, when we honored Manufacturing Day, and I saw that they did some work with our high school students, if there was a way to connect what you did with those electric bikes and those students that actually produced them, help them to maybe start their own business, which you can do with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and their SB, who's doing those classes for us, to start their own business and help them along the line to help with the manufacturing and such. I've seen the kinds of things they can build over there with those students. I think that would go a long way to help, if we're looking at manufacturing here in the city, small manufacturing is just as good as large manufacturing bills. But that's something to look at, especially with the resources being provided by Silicon Valley Clean Energy and the manufacturing that programs are over at the high school. So if we could look at, if Alex could look at that, I think we could keep it in-house. So, but I want to thank you because those programs you don't find everywhere. And I just think the things you've been doing there in the short period of time show that it's not just clean energy, it really infuses itself into the community. And this community really looks for those kinds of things, and so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, always thorough and thoughtful. Next up, Councilmember Montano.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. So Girish, thank you so much for being here and, and presenting that wonderful presentation. So I'm, I serve on the Silicon Valley, Silicon Valley Clean Energy Commission. And sometimes, it is, it's very, it is very complex, I will tell you. It's so much technical information. And we do stay there late sometimes, as I get home about 10 o'clock, so pretty, pretty long.
Oh, that's late.
But, so I just had a few questions. You mentioned about 60 million matching funds for automobile chargers for the electric vehicle. How many, how many automobile chargers or electric vehicle, electric vehicle chargers will that produce?
They're going to be, of course, you have to ask me that question. I believe it's going to be close to about 600 DC fast chargers and about 5,000 Level 2 chargers.
And they are in these priority zones that you...
This is over the two counties? This is over two counties now. But S, that's the 30, the 60 million is for the two counties. For us, it's 12 million. And that's going to create about 100 DC fast chargers and about 700 to 800 Level 2 chargers. And the DC fast chargers could go into those priority zones.
Okay. Then going back to the plan of reorganization with PG&E, how does that affect Silicon Valley Clean Energy?
As far as CCA revenues, et cetera, are concerned, we're fine. In fact, we got involved in the bankruptcy process early last year because all the money we get flows through PG&E's billing system and then comes to us. And so we intervened in the bankruptcy case and had meetings with PG&E to make sure that that revenue flow did not stop. In the current plan, that continues to stay stable. So that's, that's fine. It's what's going to happen afterwards. You know, PG&E is going to come out of bankruptcy, they're not going to be in great financial situation. So we think of this as this industry could be structured a little differently. And we're looking at ways we can get the long-term benefit for Californians higher. And that's why if you can get PG&E's scope reduced down to just doing wires, today they have a foot in every business. And so even they're also in our business of serving customers' energy versus just being in the delivery side. So it's more of an opportunity for the state and policymakers to basically restructure the industry.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. And I think you're right, they were too big, they are too big to be, they're stretched too thin and that that's one of the problems why they didn't maintain the infrastructure or the wiring. So you mentioned Senator Weiner's proposal and the other one was...
Mayor Licardo's proposal.
Right. So the one with Senator Weiner's, having the municipalities be in charge of their electric or having a utilities, don't you think that's going to be too much for utilities, I mean, for cities to handle? Because that's pretty expensive.
Let, let me clarify. Sorry, we're using unfortunately the same tone. It's very different from the city of Palo Alto or the city of Santa Clara that has their municipal utility. There's another concept in state law called municipal utility district. It's a special district. It's similar to Sacramento Municipal Utility District. And essentially, this is one district that would be created, that would cover the entire all of Northern California.
Oh, I see, okay.
It would be one district which will be governed by seven board members appointed by the governor.
Okay.
So they'll have that size. So for example, it gets to, you know, Vice Mayor Nunez's question about when will, when you may be asked to make some decisions. If this gets passed, this is a statewide thing in a set, Northern California, it's a very large municipal utility district and they'll be the ones responsible for the wires and the poles and capital and... and capital investment and things like that.
Okay, good. Thanks for the clarification because I was thinking the city, that would just be too old.
However, a city will have the option to become a municipal utility after six years. But they'll have to go to the Municipal Utility District and buy their assets from them. So step one is the Municipal Utility District will buy all the assets. But then if you want to become your own municipal utility, this bill will allow you to do that.
Okay, well, thank you so much for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Montana, always digging deep. Thank you for your inquisitions and your continued service on the Board of Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Next up, we have Councilmember Fan.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for coming and presenting to us with this important update. I think that a lot of people are trying to figure out how to approach this PG&E situation. And there's a lot of ideas on the table and oftentimes it can be confusing. So it's nice to have that clarification. I have a number of thoughts. So you mentioned earlier PG&E is in the gas business. For Silicon Valley Clean Energy, do you have your own infrastructure?
No.
Okay, so whose infrastructure are you using?
So the slide that I showed you right up front, it's PG&E's infrastructure.
Okay, so PG&E is in the gas business and we're using their infrastructure then?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you. And in regards to your, I'm sorry, Silicon Valley Clean Energy's role, would you classify it more as a third party then? A broker, an energy broker then?
No, we actually purchase energy. And now we are actually getting brand-new solar and energy storage plants built in California.
So you're purchasing energy?
Yes.
And you are selling that?
We sell it directly to 97% of Milpitas businesses and residents.
Okay, so that's a broker. By, well, at least by my definition. Nothing wrong with that. So in terms of cost then, how does that compare? Are you saving us money?
Yeah, so Milpitas has saved $5.2 million since you have joined S V C E. And last year, it was just north of $4 million in 2019.
Okay, and has anything changed in terms of service?
Zero.
Okay, well, so, and so per household then, how does that average out to?
I have, now, it's, you know, when you think of it, I think it's about $4 a month per household. But it works out about 4%. Our rates are set at 4% below PG&E right now. So just to give you some history, when we first started off, we were 1% less. In the second year, we went to 6% less. This last year, it's 4%. And we'll see, the board's going to look at our rates again in the middle of the year.
And so this restructuring effort, does it affect infrastructure? Would you own the infrastructure?
These three? Yeah, so all these will probably stay the same.
Okay.
This is not us becoming a utility district or us becoming a cooperative necessarily. In each of these plans, we could probably just stay the same. The Municipal Utility District Plan, Senator Weiner's outline actually says, CCAs will continue to serve electricity the way they are under the current. So there's also, sorry, you were talking about infrastructure, right?
Correct. So the restructuring wouldn't in fact affect any infrastructure?
There's a possibility. There's something called microgrids. And microgrids are essentially, well, very small grids that can isolate itself from the larger grid. And that's something that some CCAs are moving towards to create. Like Sonoma Clean Power is doing that, Monarch Bay Clean Power is looking at that. So that's an option we would like to preserve because some of our larger customers or campuses want to have microgrids. And PG&E is not necessarily the only.
So you would put in the money then for those upgrades?
That's potentially, yes.
So we should expect a change in the finances then?
At this point, S V C is not looking at microgrids. I'm talking about the general CCAs. We have in California today, more than 10 million people are served by CCAs. So we have 19 different CCAs already. The city of San Diego is the newest and largest CCA. They're going to become operational in 2021. So this is the general concept of CCAs as a whole. Not everyone's going to do the same thing.
Okay, so number of thoughts. One, certainly appreciate the cost savings. I worry if those microgrids enter into the equation, how that would affect those savings. And I think that that is, you know, definitely something to look at if we're going to move forward with conversations about restructuring, if that's on the table. One of the reasons why PG&E has to charge a higher rate is obviously the infrastructure liabilities. So if you absorb that, the liabilities would also increase. Now, PG&E is not permitted by law to make disparaging comments about CCAs or other clean energy programs. So, you know, there's no rebuttal here. They can't come in here and, you know, present their case. So, you know, when you're coming in here and you make very nuanced phrases like PG&E is bad at what they do and whatnot, it's... It's hard to see everything objectively. So I would appreciate if we can stick to just the facts. PG&E is big, right? We can all agree that. And it has had its failures, right? That's something that we can all agree on. But you know who's bigger? Government. And government has failed more times. So it's hard for me to believe that we can expect government to do this any better. And absolutely, I believe, yes, we should hold PG&E accountable. Absolutely, that's for the sake of the public. But my personal opinion is that we're in over our heads if we think that we can, that government can actually have the capacity and the bandwidth to do this in a manner that is less expensive to taxpayers and more efficient to the environment. I think we're better off passing policies which regulate our energy partners, hold them to accountable standards and make decisions more transparent. I think that is more realistic. And absolutely, I think that we should monitor this situation and consider all options. But I want to see more specifics. And when it comes down to the cost savings as it relates to the infrastructure liabilities, that's a big factor for me. And I'm hopeful that, you know, you can keep working towards addressing those issues. I'm certainly very thankful for the work that you're doing for not just, you know, addressing our energy needs, but also saving residents that huge chunk of change that you mentioned. I just don't want that cost saving to decrease.
If I may, make some fantastic points, really good. And I would love to have a deeper conversation with you on every one of these. I'll start with your last point, and that is core to our board and staff. We don't want to put at risk what we have. We're not going to overstep without really looking at this carefully because right now, we're providing a discount and any money we make is reinvested in the community. That's again, we want to preserve that. So that's number one. Your point about infrastructure liability costs, I think that's a great point. So when you think about some of these solutions, it's not, these aren't like a magic bullet. It's not like, oh, this model's bad and this is awesome. It ain't that way. It comes, each of these models come with baggage. I can tell you the public model, one of the things is, is slower to respond. One of the downsides of a public process like we have right here, it just takes longer to do stuff. So those are given. But I really think, and I've been in this business for 30 years. And so I've thought about this a little bit and really, when I think about this, it's... And by the way, some of the things I've said about PG&E not doing a good job, that's taken out of the CEO's words, the PG&E CEO's words in his latest filing. He has basically, David Kopter, they said, "We have done a really poor job and we have to transform ourselves from the bottom up." I wanted to bring to your attention public power. It can be done. We have 40 public power electric utilities in the state of California. Nearly every one of them serves power at rates lower than the investor-owned utility. And nearly every one of them has reliability better than the investor-owned utility. And to me, it's, the key is aligning incentives. When you have a profit motive incentive, many good things happen from that. But there's a downside to it also. And PG&E has gone through two bankruptcies. And it's one of those things, I think that's what the governor's grappling with too. Because if there's one more big disaster, it's kind of on him. So I think it's a very, these aren't simple choices where, oh, this is bad, this is good. But I think we as a state have the ability to do something. And these are big ideas, it's never been done before. This public power model that's being talked about, there's nothing as big in this country. But California is the biggest state in the nation and it's done some very big things. And it'll take some time. It's not a slam dunk. So, but there are models right in our backyard where these things have worked. But I take every one of your points is valid.
Thank you very much to the both. We'll go next to Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. At this time, thank you so much for your thoughtful presentation. And one of the questions that I have is just the water heater program that you guys offer. I was just wondering if there is any numbers on how many Milpitas residents are taking advantage of this program?
Yeah, at this point, it's very few, it's just a couple. This is because when it started, literally this pent-up demand of just sucked up the first 100. And we really didn't advertise it very much because we knew there was this demand. But going into the second phase, we'll be passing the word out more widely. There were several community meetings, et cetera, talking about this. But I think through, we'll be working with Elaine and we'll get the word out more widely.
Perfect, thank you so much. I did go to one of your community meeting presentations and it was very, very informative. So definitely let us know how we could help spread the word about the program once. So the program currently right now is in operation? Or is it something that is going to be forecasted to be executed?
No, it is operational. The first phase, all the money got sucked up. In December, the board just approved new money for it. So now we're just doing a few tweaks. We don't want to make too many tweaks because the contractor community knows the general rules and they don't want to see too many changes. So it's going to be rolled up very shortly.
Understood, thank you so much.
Okay, I don't see any further requests by our council. I do want to thank you for being here with us this evening. I want to thank Elaine for her work and attention to this great electric option we have here in town. So once again, thank you very much and have a safe drive home. And we'll see you next time. All right, that update has been received very well. And we'll move on to item number 11. Let's receive an update on preliminary NG and water savings conservation measures for implementation on city facilities and land. Welcome, Tony.
Good evening, Mayor. Welcome to the Public Workshop today.
Yeah, give a shout to the Vice Mayor and the council too now.
That's right, I'll be doing that here in a second, sorry.
But happy, yeah, go ahead.
The Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Councilmembers. This evening, we have a preliminary, a presentation to you on our preliminary energy-water conservation measures that we're walking through. With me this evening is Representative from NG. We have here Mr. John Paul Jewell, who is probably familiar to most of you that are here today. We also have Mr. Steve Sealy in the back, who's going to answer some technical questions here as we start walking through the presentation. So tonight's agenda, we're going to go through these five items. So I'm going to review a brief timeline with you to just kind of walk you back through everything we've already been through in the past. Give a little bit about the program background. We will talk about, we will then go through and Mr. Jewell here and Mr. Steve Sealy will go through the preliminary energy-water conservation measures that have been identified thus far. We'll talk about next steps. And then at this point, at that last end of the meeting, what we want to do here is really solicit input from council members on what you're seeing, any ideas that you want us to see, want to see more of or less of in the process. This is just a very first step in a very long process that we've been going on with this project for since about 2017. So this is just one step in the process we're working on here. So to walk you through the timeline, so like I mentioned earlier, in October of 2017 is when we started the ESCO effort. So that's the Energy Service Company effort. We worked on, started developing the RFP and scope of work for that effort there. May of 2018, we released the RFP. June of 2019, NG was selected as our energy partner or was identified as our energy partner and notified that we would be taking this item to council. Then October 24th, you all collectively agreed and approved the contract with NG to be our energy partner and to develop the process and start developing the investment-grade audit. So as part of the effort of developing the investment-grade audit, we are identifying energy conservation measures, which is part of the step that we're doing here today. So our roadmap for where we've been, you can see the check marks around the side. So we've walked through the entire RFP and preliminary IGA process. Part of the RFP that was, effort that got taking place last year. And now we're on the first step of the project development phase. So we're looking today at the energy and water conservation measures that have just been identified so far. And the full process is going to be explained later on as we start walking through the different slides. The program goals, so we have three main program goals that we're looking at here. First one being economics, we want to leverage the guaranteed savings from the energy and water conservation measures that get developed to pay for these efforts that are going into it. The third, the second part of the economic benefits is to reduce our operating maintenance costs, which is a great value to the city. And then also the idea is to bundle some of the quick wins for longer payback items. So easier fixes that we can do such as replacing streetlights with LEDs and then couple that with some of the longer payback items such as your HVAC. So we're going to... So we're going to be looking at some of those packages as we start to continue to develop this as we go along. Of our environmental benefits and goals that we develop in this program, we really address some of our G, some of our climate action goals by really reducing our greenhouse gas emissions as part of this program, and we improve our resiliency. So we've talked a lot today about energy, seems to be the energy meeting today. So part, a lot of the efforts that we're looking into as part of the energy conservation measures really give us some of the resiliency. And then our last major goal area here is the human aspect of it, really enhancing the comfort and usability of our city facilities, and the community impact on safety, and that would be involved in this as well. So we're going to walk you through, or Mr. John Paul Jewell will take over here after the next slide, but we're going to walk you through, through four different project groups that we're looking at here. Your first project group, or that we're looking at, would be your renewables and your energy storage. And in that, in that category, we have two main things we're looking at. We've got the solar and electric charging stations that we'd be looking at in there. Then we have battery storage under that, under that category. In our lighting category, or lighting grouping there, we have streetlight and park lighting, lighting replacements with LED, and we also have interior and exterior facility lighting that would be addressed as part of this grouping here. Under our energy management system and HVAC upgrades, there are four items there. So you've got the energy EMS system, which we call it for short, used to control the different climates and temperatures in different, in different rooms. We've got the HVAC upgrades for our facilities, we've got some high-efficiency transformers. And then there's going to be discussion there about what we shortened short called SCADA, Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition System. So you'll be hearing about that here today. You're also going to hear a little bit about that again when we start talking during the CIP process, because there's a CIP project for this as well. And then our last grouping of projects here is the water savings. We've got energy conservation or water conservation measures planned here for replacing water fixtures and retrofitting those in the system. We have irrigation controls that can be upgraded throughout our parks and our landscaped areas. Then we have water meter upgrades. This is another project, again, that's in our CIP, but we'll be discussing that as part of this ESCO process here today, NG. And I'll turn over to President, yes, sir, Vice Mayor. Okay.
There it is. This will be the last time I ask the question, whether there's somebody sitting there. So I apologize. I just want to get real clear, Tony, so we're not really doing anything tonight as much as this is information for what's going to be coming up at another future meeting, right?
Correct, correct. So I have a slide at the end, but I'll tease it a little bit right now. So in the next, when we discuss next steps, in the, after we run through the different measures that have been identified, really what we want to get from you today is, take a look at what's been the work that's gone into identifying these measures today. Give us a feel for what direction you'd like to see us go towards, whether you want more in the, in the sense of, let's, we, you know, we've talked a lot tonight about PG&E, for example, should we be looking more towards items about resiliency? Is water conservation more important to you? Those are the type of things we want to kind of pull out from you today.
Okay.
We will, we will take this, so this is just a preliminary part of it. We want to take that information from you, and then go back and refine these measures, and we'll have some final ECMs or energy conservation measures that we'll bring back again, for your one last look at them. And then when we come back again, about a month after that, that's when you'll finally make a vote, yea or nay, on whether you want to proceed. So this is just one stop along the long journey that we're going to be going on with our partnership with, with NG.
Okay, thank you very much.
So now I'll turn it over to Mr. John Paul Jewell to discuss in detail some of these measures. I think as, as, as the questions start coming up, just, it's making more organic, as you see things that you want to ask questions about, please stop us and just ask.
Thanks, Tony, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council and staff for the opportunity to present tonight. There's a lot of technical information and abbreviations, so as Tony said, please feel free to interrupt if you need further clarification as we go. My name is John Paul Jewell, I work for NG Services, and this is my colleague Steve Sealy. We've been looking into these different buckets of energy measures, so I'm going to walk through what each of them are, and how they apply to the city of Milpitas, and hopefully leave some time for questions and some back and forth. So in the first group, the renewables and energy storage, that's your solar arrays, your solar power, electrical, electric vehicle charging, and battery energy, energy storage and backup power. So this table here is a high-level summary of the money that's currently being spent on electricity at these locations. It doesn't count for a lot of pumps and streetlights, so this is, you know, a low-ball estimate, but the city's spending over a million dollars a year on electricity purchases. Our effort is to take that and lower that number as far as we can through energy efficiency measures and onsite generation, and use those savings to reinvest in city infrastructure and, and just save the city taxpayers' money. So as we go forward through this, we will be considering these measures and bringing them forth to think about what's the right technical application, but what also is the efficient and cost-effective measure. So the first, when we think about solar, there's a lot that goes into the considerations for placing solar. So first is, you want to optimize the size. You don't want to build too much of it, because that would be a waste of money, but you want to get as close as you can to reducing the energy bill down to zero based on how much you're currently paying, what your rate structure is, the time of use of power at the facilities. We want to account for any future energy efficiency plans, so any lighting replacement and HVAC improvements that would lower the energy bill, you'd want to make sure you take that into consideration, which we are doing. You want to site it close to the main electricity, electrical meters, so you don't have to send bore shots too far. You need to avoid shade from buildings and trees. It's also good to prioritize areas that provide valuable shade, so for parking cars underneath to keep them cool, or if, you know, some of the school districts we work with, put shade on grassy areas for students to, you know, watch ball, ballgames and things like that. We also want to make sure we are considering any future use plans, so don't put anything where maybe a new building might be going in a few years, or if there are questions about site usage, we've, we've worked with staff to make sure we incorporate those concerns. Our general rule of thumb is golf balls, baseballs, and softballs are bad for solar panels, but soccer balls are generally, won't damage them, so make sure we're too far enough away from any baseball fields and golf courses. We also would need to consider truck traffic and things that could be too tall, or make them, make the arrays tall enough to allow that. And then, of course, the city permitting requirements and state permitting requirements. And finally, this is an important one, and we'll talk about this, is we want to avoid taking down too many trees while there are, we understand the importance of trees in the city of Milpitas, and if, if we do have to impact trees, we want to be sure that we replace them. So I'm going to show you on the next couple of slides, some blue boxes on city maps that show where solar power could go. These are not by any means final designs, these are just showing where it could go. We're working with staff to consider, okay, we know that there are too many trees in this area, so that array won't go there, but I'll just show you sort of the maximum potential, and from there, we'll be sort of scaling it down and, and taking into consideration the community concerns and staff concerns.
All right, if I may pause you right there.
Yes.
We'll go to Councilmember Montana.
I just have one question. You mentioned that it would be a waste of money to build too many solar panels, so I'm wondering why.
So, so great question. So generally, the, the most cost-effective way to think about energy savings is to use as little as possible, and then build renewable to account for what you can't, you know, eliminate through energy efficiency, because it costs money to put up the steel and the panels. We still, everything we propose will be more cost-effective than the alternative of not doing it, so, but yes, you don't want to overbuild, especially the current rate structure in California and with PG&E. If you build more than 100% of, of your current demand to be covered by solar, once you get above 100%, the amount you get back for those extra electrons, those extra coventures, that drops off. So you start, it starts to get fairly expensive for what's not a great payback if you build too much solar. So we want to make sure that we're not oversizing it.
Okay, it's, what about if you had batteries?
Yeah, we, we will get into that, and that's, that's a great, batteries enable you to right-size it a bit, yes.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Montana. We're going to keep pausing here, we're going to the Vice Mayor.
Great. Just real quick, and so mine is, I had asked once before about the possibility of the city having solar farms, so that those HOAs, those condominiums that don't have a place to have their own solar panels, that if the city were to put them up on its property, is it possible to then sell that or provide that to those, like a duplex, a fourplex for affordable housing, so they could get the benefit, and we could provide it? So I don't, I'm not so much looking for an answer now, but that's...
Yep, that's a great question, a great consideration. We, the issue is space and finding space to put it, so we'll get a little bit more into certain locations where there, there's still not enough space to cover all the city facilities, let alone building for, for the community, but there, that's a great idea. And we have seen in other instances where, say, a city facility didn't have enough space, but the business next door had a big flat roof, and so they worked out a partnership to do something.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, carry on.
Thanks. So here we have the Public Works Complex and the Sports Center. So these blue boxes are where you could technically put solar power, and we're currently working with staff and looking through city permitting rules and making sure that what we do bring back will be cost-effective and the right use of space. So just, don't want to get too far into the weeds on this array going here and this array going there, but just wanted to sort of give you the lay of the land of what we are currently considering. So you'll see some blue on parking lots, those would be shade, shade canopies under which cars can park and/or drive. You'll see some blue on roofs, and that, those would potentially be rooftop solar panels. I'll draw your attention to the one on the right, the Sports Center, so the city already has some solar, solar installed, so there is still a remainder of the energy bill at that complex that could be offset by solar, and so that we are proposing just to add a bit more. And the next image I'll go to is City Hall, the City Hall Complex and the library. So you'll notice on the City Hall, 1, 2, and 3 are sort of a different color and pattern. Those are in areas where there are trees that are big, beautiful trees that we want to avoid impacting, so we're, we're sort of realizing that those may not be in the final recommendation, but we wanted to show you, for instance, where, you know, it could fit. The, again, like 5, 7, and 8, those are rooftop considerations, and then 6, there is a parking canopy consideration. At the library, just a brief update on this, at the parking garage, there's a lot of space there to potentially put arrays on the top floor of the parking garage. We have learned recently that the PG&E service there cannot handle, so it's, it's not sized to take solar power of this magnitude, and they would actually require the city to pay for those upgrades. So this one would likely not be cost-effective, and will probably fall out of our recommendations, but I wanted to show you that we are considering it. So on to battery storage and backup power, so battery storage can do a couple of things. One is, it can be used to provide emergency power for critical facilities, coupled with generators, which some of the city facilities already have, and controls. So if the power were to go down through, say, power shutdowns, in theory, the, a facility could run off of solar power being fed to a battery with backup generator. Batteries can also be used to optimize load and, and optimize the cost savings of solar, so the rates are changing such that electricity is more expensive in the parts of the day when solar is not at its peak. So having a battery system can help the city optimize the payback of these measures. So we are considering batteries at a few different locations, in addition to some backup power controls. And those, those locations include City Hall, the Senior Center, the Community Center, the Public Works Complex, Fire Station 1, and the Sports Center. Finally, there are state incentives for battery energy storage systems, and we are working with staff to make sure that if there are any batteries in the final scope recommendation, that the city is able to take advantage of the state incentives to help defray any of the costs. EV chargers are fairly, we've talked a bit about them a bit tonight, but they're fairly self-explanatory, but anywhere where we are proposing to touch a parking lot with solar, we will also propose to put electric vehicle charging. There are grants and funds from both the CCAs and from the air quality districts that we will help the city take advantage of. So in the second batch of, of items, we're going to talk about lighting, so both at the streets, street lighting and park lighting, as well as the actual facilities, interior and exterior lighting. So essentially, when we talk about lighting retrofits, we're talking about replacing the older lamps and ballasts with new efficient LEDs, and putting in motion sensors and controls where applicable. When we're talking about outdoor lighting in the parks, we're thinking about optimizing light coverage and some field lighting, it's, it's expensive to maintain. If, if one light goes out, you have to get a bucket out there and raise it, so the LEDs last a lot longer and have energy savings. So those are some of the considerations. We're also, for instance, at the battery, library parking garage, there are some safety considerations of improving the lighting in some of the exterior areas. So that's part of what we're looking at as we do these audits and recommend where lighting improvements go. The additionally, some of the, the city has been doing a good job of changing its street lighting over to LEDs, and so we would be standardizing and making sure to match what the city has already done with, with the remaining light fixtures. The third group of the four is the energy management systems and HVAC, and the SCADA, which we'll talk a little bit more about. So energy management system, making sure to standardize the, the energy management systems citywide, so city staff has one sort of controller interface to manage temperature set points and make sure that everything is running well and efficiently, as well as addressing some of the maintenance needs and replacement needs of the heating and air conditioning equipment. There are some maintenance savings that come, there are some energy savings as well as maintenance savings that come with upgrading both EMS and HVAC. Transformers, so as we've been walking around the city and doing our energy audits, we've noticed that some of the city's transformers are older and buzzing loudly, and that usually indicates that energy is being wasted. So one potential measure is to replace some of those with energy-efficient varieties that both reduces losses and improves electrical reliability, so reducing the risk of outages. SCADA, which is the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, is a, it's a way for the city to sort of control and monitor its pumps, wastewater system, its stormwater system, and the, so for instance, right now, if a city's pump sends an alert, city staff doesn't know exactly what the alert is for, they have to roll a truck and go and troubleshoot it, so the SCADA system would sort of bring some smarts to, to that and alert the city ahead of time. This is what's wrong at this pump, this, this is what's needed. This sort of equips the city with the, the why things are, are being alarmed and allows for improved cyber security, improved reliability, and helps to reduce costs of maintenance. And as, as Tony mentioned, there is capital allocated for this already, and we, we look forward to bringing back more detailed information about the, all of these measures, including this one at the, at future... including this one at the, at future meetings. So the final group is in water savings and water measures, including water meter upgrades, water fixture retrofits, and irrigation controls. So at both residential and commercial water meters across the city, we are looking at upgrading the analog meters to advanced metering infrastructure so that the meters can be read remotely instead of having to roll a truck. Additionally, as analog meters age, they start to get less accurate. So improved accuracy through the digital AMI meters will help the city, you know, make sure they're billing accurately. And with sinks, fixtures, toilets, citywide, we're looking at making sure that valves are tuned properly so that no water is being lost. And no water is a very sensitive resource in, in Northern California. And we want to make sure that the city of Milpitas is saving money and saving its resources. There are grants available regionally for some of these measures as well that we will help the city take advantage of. And finally, this one is fairly self-explanatory, but weather-based irrigation controls. So in parks and medians where the city waters and irrigates grass or, or fields, this measure would allow for more central and, and remote management and monitoring of the watering. And to make sure, you know, if it's forecasted to rain tomorrow, potentially not running the sprinklers that day, but letting the rain just, just do it, to sort of conserve water. It also helps with leak detection and automatic shut-off if there is a, a pipe leakage or something like that. So with that, I'll turn it back over to, to Tony to talk about next steps, and then we can get to questions.
Thank you, John Paul. As we discussed earlier, this is just the initial step in this process that we're going through in identifying the ECMs for, for our city. Reviewing these today, taking your input on where, what directions we should or should not be going, coming back to you again, and then coming back for a final vote on what package we want to go with. So if we just look at our next steps, today, February 4th, this is where we are today. We are reviewing the preliminary energy and water conservation measures, ECMs as we'll call it for short. On February 19th, we'll be taking the same presentation over to the Energy and Environmental Sustainability Commission and to get their input as well on where things stand. They are, their, their task is to be put on a guiding, guiding body to, to council, providing input on that as well. So we want to get their input. And we want to come back again in March, in March of 2017, 2020, come back here again and have another conversation with you, this time around, taking whatever input we get from you today. We're gonna dial that into the ECMs. We're going to go and retool whatever we can retool and bring those back for you for a final look at what the ECMs will be for our city. April 21st will be the day that we actually come to you for some kind of a decision, a vote on, on what energy measures we want to proceed with, if, if any at all, and give us some direction on how we want to finance some of these projects. In the summer of 2020, if all goes according to this plan, we can start implementing some of these measures throughout our city. So what, what I want to do is just sort of open it up for questions. So this is nearly the question part of our presentation or guidance part of our presentation, if you would say. We want to leave the four groups up on, on the slide here so you can be reminded of the, the four different buckets that we're looking at. And we put just three teaser questions out there for you, just to kind of get the, your thought process going and, and get the conversation going. The first question is, are there any additional areas where you'd like the team to investigate for energy and water savings? I know Vice Mayor Nunez has already put out the, the, the direction to look at solar farms. And that's something that the NG team has been looking at, trying to find any empty space in the city to try to maximize and see if we can get some solar. But definitely it seems like that's a direction that, at least for Vice Mayor, wants us to look into some more. So that's the kind of input we're looking for. Are there any conservation measures you'd like for us to focus on? This, all this evening, or at least the majority of it, we've talked a lot about PG&E resiliency. Is that something you want to, you want to see us to? I know Councilor Montana has already asked about battery storage. So is, is that an area that we should be focusing on some more? And then in regards to our EV, EV charging that we have, should the city set that up? And set up a fee to charge for that and bring in some revenue for the city? That's just some discussions that we want to bring out. So just three teaser questions. Obviously, we're not focused on just these three here, but we'll open it up for just some, your input and direction.
Thank you very much, Tony and John Paul. I want to thank you for the presentation. Looking forward to some of these projects happening sooner than later through this great program. A few, a couple of things I want to touch on. First, I just want to say that I'm in support of any project across the city where the project will stand for indefinite amount of years until the useful life is over. I know there are areas that you indicated in the city through the aerial view maps, like on top of the police station, maybe. But I don't want to build something there and then maybe one day get a new police station there. And so I hope we're being mindful of that. I know we do for other projects. So I just want to put that there for the record, as we're mindful of opportunities in the city. Also, I want to ask, I love all the conservation measures and the different types of infrastructure that can be put in place. Through your program, let's say you build a solar panel, for example. Are we, is there a warranty for that? Can you tell me about that?
Yeah, great question. So the, everything is warranted by the manufacturer. So solar arrays, for instance, are generally warranted for 25 years. We only work with tier-one suppliers, so we ensure that we have long-term relationships with these suppliers so that there's not a risk of them going out of business tomorrow. We also guarantee the savings on our programs so that if the program underperforms for some reason, if the solar doesn't perform, then we will cut the city a check for, to make up the gap of, of whatever that underperformance was. So that helps take a little bit of the uncertainty out of it.
Okay, great. I think that's great for the public's knowledge. Especially that latter part of what you spoke about, the ensuring the savings, essentially. So I'm gonna, just gonna go straight forward here. I know there's 11 measures I have looked, I see before me. I'm not gonna, there's too many of them. But I really do like, and I'm not even gonna get into these things. I'm just gonna just give you just a handful from myself. So I would probably say five, six, seven, nine, and 10, uh, disagree, five, six, seven, nine, and 11. Okay. And next up, we'll go to Vice Mayor Nunez.
So, so first, in those pictures that have different agencies you've helped or you've been associated with, that I saw up there, I saw MUSD and such.
Yes.
So was Eastside in there?
It wasn't up on the screen, but we did work with Eastside.
Oh, I know that. I just want to know if it was up there, because I was there when you did. So that can sort of make me lean one way or the other. That's all I'm asking for. But I'm, I'm really interested in, if, if in your study, that whole thing about not using gas anymore. And if in, in this, in this study that you're going to be doing, can that be an element? Or is that not an element? Because is, is there going to be some type of savings we can figure out? If there's gas, a gas line or no gas line?
And I'll, I'll kind of give it input there and then I'll let the, the team jump in. So as part of our resiliency, so the, the renewables, energy storage package that we're looking at, the six key facilities that John Paul mentions, that's the, this facility we're in right now, City Hall, Public Works, PD, Community Center, Sports Center, Senior Center, and Fire Station One. As part of trying to make those facilities as resilient as at all possible, there is the solar that we're looking at as an option. We are applying battery backups to it. But in addition to that, there's also trying to figure out what type of generator power we want to add to these facilities where applicable as well. As part of the back and forth that we're doing, we are looking at what would make sense. We get a generator in there that's more diesel-powered, we go natural gas. So there, these are things that are being tossed around. So if the, if the council's desire is to say, hey, we do want to get as resilient as possible at these facilities, but stay, stay away from natural gas at all possible or just completely, that's definitely something that we can use as our guiding principle for how we make these facilities resilient.
So I, I would just ask that if, if an opportunity presents itself to take a look at that, because I've heard this council talk about wanting to be a, a city that, that wants to be able to say, new construction isn't, we're not going to allow for gas. So what happens if that's something we start looking towards? If there's something there that we can change to that eliminates gas, what would it be and what would it look like? That's number one. Number two, I'm a firm believer, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Are there some cities, some agencies that have already done this, made changes? I don't know if you've been to a Home Depot lately where, once you walk in, you, you look at your phone and you put in what you're looking for, it will actually guide you through that Home Depot, right to the spot, to the item you want. And it saves them money. It saves the customer money. But it's all done because of the, it's Aruba and HPE who developed the little things you put on the wall, you know, so it can guide you, attracts you, but it also guides you to the spot you want. And I remember councilperson Dominguez went and spoke to, I think it was Eric, others? That only spoke Spanish. And, but one of the things they got from that, that whole group was what would make your life easier? And some of that was put, fed into what, it's something like 10% of the Home Depots are experimenting with that now. But what happens if a certain aisle isn't used for three minutes, that light goes out? And so they're saving energy by these pods that they're putting up on the ceiling. So it's things like that, that person's already using. And if you knew about those, I'd be interested in those that are already there that we could use. And I'm a big one on field trips. So if they're there, I like to go see them, especially if they're smart cities. So I hear, smart cities, I use that, hear that term a lot.
Yes.
I'm not sure how, and I'm sure we all have this, I'm not sure we all have the same definition. But to me, it's a smart city that uses technology, but also helps those persons that don't have the technology to get it, lessen their cost of living in that city, and helps them maneuver within that city. So if you know of a city that does that, take a visit there and, and see what are those things that we could bring here? Especially if it's close for us to go, and since where we're, where we're at, I think we should be able to find those. So I'm, I'm, for anybody, anything on that list, for me, I'd take them all and look at them all, but I would. But I'm also interested in what you could show us that really is working now in making residents' lives easier and less costly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And next we're going to Councilmember Fan.
Thanks, John, for presenting. You know, they, they do a lot of good work down in South San Jose, too. A lot of work in, on school districts. Franklin McKinley is, is one of them. And, you know, I'm happy that they made their way up here. The, the upgrades that you're referring to, it's primarily in energy and, and solar, right? Is there any other areas?
So there's some water measures we're looking at, water conservation and irrigation, water meters, as well as solar battery lighting. Basically, anything that uses energy or water, our team is looking at it to see if there is another technology out there that could provide savings or facility improvements for the city.
Would, would you be the, would you be the vendor as well, or are you just the one exploring?
So good question. We don't manufacture anything. We are product agnostic. And the way our process works is, so we're doing the audit now, basically counting every light bulb and, and trying to figure out where all the energy spend is going, bringing back a suite of, here are all the technologies that could help improve costs, usability, smart cities technologies. And then we are getting bids from local subcontractors for implementing those measures. And then we, we take those, those bids, we will be working with city staff to look at the cost of, of doing that. And we would serve as the sort of general contractor, the single point of, of the single contract. And then we would manage all of those vendor and contractor relationships. But we share the bids with the city and we, we run a competitive bidding process to make sure that anything, anyone that we are working with meets the, the standards of the city of Milpitas.
Absolutely. And Tony, I, I trust that you will bring, you know, that, that process to the council for, for input?
Absolutely, yeah. So as part of this step that we're going through, to me, say, again, this is just preliminary, that look, look at what's going on right now. We will be coming back in March to have a discussion on the final ECMs that have been selected. At that time, we'll also get some input from the NG team as well, because I believe we have some contractor, we have some contractor sidewalks that are going to be occurring before that time. So we'll get a sense for what the contractor community is bidding on some of these items. So we'll have, as we get further and further down the line, not only will we, we'll be able to key in more on exactly what measures we want to do, but we'll get a general, a better idea too on what the savings are going to be and what the costs are going to be from the contracting world. And we'll be bringing that back to council throughout the process.
Sure. Well, in, in terms of where I'd like for, for you to look further with our savings, I'd really like if we can take a look at smart meters for our water usage. I believe that there are a, a number of, you know, partners out there that we can work with to develop a system that really tracks usage and allow for, you know, some, some really efficient savings for our ratepayers. So if, if you can make a note of that, I, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. And just to add to that, that is one of the projects that we are looking, one of the measures that we are looking at. And, and fortunately for us, too, it's a, it's a measure that was already identified in our CAP. And it's something that when we, we worked with the finance team on getting some bonds set up for that as well. So there is going to be some funding already available for that measure itself. We still need to work with our NG team to determine what the cost to implement that measure is going to be, to make sure that the money that we already had identified in our CAP and with the bond companies is going to meet all of that. But we're, we're right there. We're on, we're on, we're all set to go.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Very well. Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. Next up, we have Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. At this time, one of the areas that I don't know have been explored, I'm just trying to think. I was able to join a delegation that went over to Costa Rica. This is one of the conversations that Vice Mayor is referring to. They, their system, I mean, they're almost, they're, I think they're at 100% renewable energy. And so some of the things that I remember seeing was definitely putting things where we could control the lights, right? Something as simple as putting a key card in or something that, that goes beyond just the sensors, but definitely moving into that smart city. What I'm hearing in this presentation, I just want to clarify, is this for city buildings or city-owned land only? Or is this also looking at private, private, private and public partnerships, such as with the school district or other private companies?
This is specific to city buildings and land.
Okay, perfect. So with that, one of the areas that I think if we could look into, which I'm not too sure if it's included, is the microhydropower systems that maybe could be included in our creeks. So those are some land that belongs to the city, but I do understand that may overlap with the water district as well. with the water district as well. But I do believe maybe looking into that and seeing how we could capture that opportunity to, to build sustainable energy through those systems. The second part is just with that, is that ecological footprint. So how are we doing the ecological footprint in areas that are still open lands, such as like our marshes? Those are hills, right? So sometimes we don't think of these areas that may cross over jurisdictions again with county and so forth, but I think they're important to look at. So if we could maybe look at those, I would gladly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so I want to point out clarification, we're solely focused 100% on city property. And none of this is applicable to any other jurisdiction.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Next up, Councilmember Montana.
The question I had was the lighting, the streetlights. How, how did you assess, did you go through every street and?
Yes.
Wow, that must have taken a long time.
Yeah, we've, we've got, in addition to Steve, we have a few other engineers and project managers, and we have a fairly big team in San Jose and Oakland and in between who's worked on this.
Okay. Yeah, because some of those streetlights are really old and they have, yeah, so that would be great. I, I, I like all of your, all of your list, because we, we start, we need to really make sure that our city is efficient. It's just like your home, you have to find ways to make sure you don't use all that energy, because it is expensive. So I, I like, I like this, this is great. Is this, is this an action item, motion, just for information only? Okay, so you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, now's the time to provide any input to Tony in regards to any of the conservation measures in your agenda that you feel is best for Milpitas. So I just want to state that again, so that every member of this council has an opportunity to contribute to this item as we go forward. And it's going to be pretty exciting and awesome to look at how we want to make best use of this opportunity. Yeah, you know, what I did, Councilmember Montana, I just looked at the list here of 11 measures that are brought forward tonight. And you don't have to stick to the 11, you can, if you have any other ideas, one of the slides, Tony. Oh, this one right here, thank you. You know, totally open, and I appreciate that. But I just chose like five of them myself out of the list to, that I feel like are pretty impactful. So I think what we do tonight, if you need more time, anybody, even myself, if I think different tomorrow, I, we can always call Tony. And, yeah, and all of them are good, right? Okay. All right, next up here, Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Another thing that I, I was thinking as I'm reading this list, definitely I will be sending more notes to you. One of them for me for sure is interior and exterior facility lighting. That's really important to me. I was just wondering, though, as we're moving through this energy efficient plan, are we looking at how maybe it ties into safety? Because I could see how some of the suspect, there is, if we go, if we could take this opportunity to really implement a, a safety through environmental design, where we're working collaboratively with, with the police department and they're able to tell us certain lighting, if, how we shape it or where we put it. So I was just wondering if that's a collaboration that's taking place right now.
Yes, safety is definitely one of, some of the driving criteria here. So what I didn't mention earlier is that in addition to the goals, program goals that we have, we are actually making sure we are aligning these measures to the council priorities. So safety being, being one of the top council priorities as well, environment being another council priority, transportation being council priority. So you've got to look through the different measures that we have here, all of them feed into these council priorities, one way or the other. So when we talk about the measures that, that NG, the NG team has been developing, we definitely are putting safety as one of that, one of the, at the top of it as well. I am getting feedback from what you're saying is to maybe, maybe consult more with the police department on, make, look, considering other items as well. We'll definitely take that feedback and, and work on it some more.
Absolutely, I would definitely recommend, there is a report out there, it's C E P T E C, and it's basically safety through environmental design, and I could see how we could definitely maximize the resources, since you guys are putting so much time into this. Thank you so much, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dominguez. All righty. Well, I want to thank John Paul for your outstanding work. And I know many of us must ask you a question, and I appreciate your answers. Tony.
Thank you.
Elaine as well, I know Public Works in the House. Oh, and the associates that are here with us. Thank you. And it looks like we've accepted the update and provided input, and I'll look forward to the series of meetings that we'll have with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, moving on here to the last item. Thank you, Councilmember Fan, for the consent calendar. And next up is item number 14, let's receive a preview of the next city council meeting agenda. I have no questions or concerns or anything. I see everybody, okay. Look to our city manager, Steve, anything?
I could just let you know, I think we're looking at a couple of items we'll, we'll push out to another meeting. I'll just let you know, it's going to be number 15 and 16 are going to push to a different agenda. And then I think I heard one item wanted, you wanted to have come back, one item, one item you wanted to have come back, I heard that earlier from Councilmember Fan. I think that's all I wanted to let you know.
Thank you very much. I want to say it was a great meeting, decent time of the night, we're going to go ahead and adjourn. I want to go to the Vice Mayor.
Just real quick, I just want to make sure that Mary has it in, in the minutes that I didn't pull a single item from consent. Thank you, Mary.
You know, I should probably add too, there was an item from Councilmember Dominguez, SEDAW, and that was also an item that we need to have on this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I want to, during this meeting, in honor of, in memory of my nephew, Calvin Brown Jr., who lived off of Yosemite and was last a student at Rose Elementary, and I know he's in heaven, and so I want to thank everybody for the calls, text messages, and sympathy cards, it really means a lot, and.